And if you see something that looks similar, let's group them that way.
Where's my phone?
I'm feeling like we probably gonna need one of these.
Should've used the little bitty post things. It's a little cold in here, Ms. Wong. She turned it down.
We turned this thing like it don't really make any difference and everyone goes to race one with you.
If you wanna, you need here, you can't.
Fifteen years is a goal.
Fifteen years now would be this, probably. So I'm actually thinking that one. I'm gonna need to talk a little bit about what these actually mean to folks, I think, and what your conversations were like. Let's see. See where these go. So sometimes it does happen this way, like where do they go? The point is you've had some good conversations and you share a lot about what your vision is. First of all, before we get to this though, what was it like to have these conversations in your triads and your groups of like? Cool? Why?
Well, she learned from other people. Their ideas and we don't typically have a lot of time to do that very often and hopefully twenty minutes will be good.
So you learned some new things from folks that you didn't know about them before?
Say one more time, please.
You learned some things about people that you didn't know before? And about their vision? What are others' experience?
There's a little, there's a little risk in the conversations that we have there too. You're just, you're just talking and you just, you're just how I feel and, you know, you're not worried about, you know, somebody's interpretation of it or something. Trying to do, you know, and you have time. You made us go there and do that. That's why we did it.
I think, you know, the continuing theme, you know, was heard about how respectful the community is to each other and I said, you know, I feel that, but I know my granddaughter's father, who's African American, did not have that view. And so for me to be able to express that and say, it's respectful if you're like me, where my granddaughter and her daddy have not felt that way. So it was good to share that information because in order to where we wanna get, to where we wanna go, we have to understand that.
That's very personal.
Yeah.
What else did you discover in your small groups?
I was, when we switched from group one to group two and there was, there was a sharing from other groups, some of the things really upset me in terms of, I didn't, because I didn't have the privilege and then it was physically impossible to know like where was that coming from, but some, you know, there was a couple of things that really rocked, rocked me back on my heels. So that, I mean, that is an interesting thing about dynamics as far as like, cause you don't have, you don't know, you can't ask me, well, where was that coming from? What was that about? It was just, it, I mean, there, there's been a need to all these things in your head. That's because of this and that's because of this and that. And then you go to the bad, not helpful, productive place and, and not straightforward place. So when that, when that, what do you call it? The analogy with agriculture, fertilization happened, that was, that was very difficult for me.
So it sounds like there's some things that, there were some assumptions that you had to make because you don't have the information about what, what the motivation was behind the comments without the opportunity to kind of check that assumption.
Yeah, and I'm owning that, you know. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying it was that people were coming from a bad place. I'm just sharing from my personal place and saying that's how, that's, that was my experience in that, in that, in that experience.
Can I ask what the comment was?
Of the joint, of the city county of school boards coming together.
Well, this would be an opportunity to kind of check the assumption or at least talk a little bit more about what was behind that. Because I think that's, if I read this off joint school board, I didn't know what that meant either. So what was the vision in this discussion? What was the, how did this show up as one of the visions in terms of fifteen years from now?
Well, I'll give you some background and I think this number's right. There are thirteen counties out of a hundred that don't have a combined school system. Three counties with thirteen, oh, it's only three with thirteen. And one's Jackson? I don't know, but we're one of the few that have that.
One's Halifax, because I was there. They got three school systems in one county.
Oh, my, okay. That is, we have issues currently going on with the middle schools, you know, the city schools, building projects, county schools. We have, General Assembly thirty years ago had a local bill, the Democrats did, that basically said, you've got to spend one cent of your sales tax and divided pro rata between the city and county students. And the county gets a lot more than money. Eighty, what, eighty-four percent? Is that right? Something like that, eighty-four percent? And the city gets a small amount. The county has been fixing up schools, the city hasn't. The city has the supplemental tax, the county doesn't. So there's a lot of angst going on about that because the county schools have been fixed up, the city schools have remained pretty much the same.
So it kind, it kind of goes back, some of that could go back to a little bit like when I was talking about the property tax model being kind of broken. You end up, when you have an eat, you can't eat somewhere else, you end up having to get it on property tax. And it doesn't change the need because the need is there, but is, was, is there a better way to do that? And I don't know, because I don't know what all that would involve. And I might say, you know, wouldn't it be nice to where we, that there is a, something in place where we didn't have to, where the process handled that, that decision.
So let me go back to that ground, that discussion guideline about this joint school board is actually in a position. So let's back up. What is it that we're interested in having? And, and one of the things I was hearing is equitable, equitability amongst school systems in terms of, at least facilities, I heard that loud and clear and there were probably a couple of other things that you said. But I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but what is the interest behind this?
I think the, and I don't have a position of that one or the other, but I think why people go to that position of combining is that the building could be paid for.
So it's, it's capital needs would be addressed?
Yeah, right now we have agreed to build two city schools out of general fund money in addition to that pro rata distribution.
Wait, which is you need to fund the county?
Yes, very indeed.
Cause, cause most counties use their general fund to do all the schools, but we're, we've got a special situation.
Right, we, we don't have a choice. Instead of that self-statement coming to commissioners, they spend anyway they want to. It is earmarked specifically to be handled pro rata between the schools. And so there's, and so there's, I think both school systems do not, our official position is not to merge. That would be one way to handle a situation. There would be cost. City would lose a supplemental tax of what, fifteen cents? Or it'd have to equalize. It'd have to equalize. So you can't just, you can't just say you're gonna do it. The General Assembly talked about it and then talked about it and so, you know, it is a, it is a controversial issue here.
Well, but again, the reason to get at the interest, if you want to address the capital needs of the facilities of all schools, there's so many ways you can get at that. Okay? Rather than joint school board, which has the potential to put people's back up in certain way. I only say this not because I know anything about your local situation, but I've been just in this other retreat with four different boards, the county commissioners and these three local school boards. Boy, you say the word consolidation and people are like all over that for lots of reasons. And yet when you say, this is what we want to have happen, that, that leaves so many more avenues available to get there. So that's an example, I think, where, digging deeper, asking the question, what does that mean? You know, let's, let's hear that, create a greater understanding, I'm assuming, in the room. So that's, that's a part of the vision is that basically the schools get what they need. All schools get what they need.
Every child should get what they need.
Yeah, and you'll find the kids up there, something else. And I said, all drilled down to take care of the kids and how do you, how do you figure out the best way, the best model to get them?
Well, and this actually says, invest in education to create a more robust community. Is this, this is maybe not the same as, but is it related to this?
Actually, you're supposed to say four, three.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's a code.
There is a code.
Dawn, did you do that?
This is related to this, I got it.
I have to be known, someone who didn't have it.
Okay. So this is the education, but the reason you're doing that is so that you have good, wait, wait, how does this get out of sync? Good jobs for the children, the economic opportunities that you want to see. Economic are, I would imagine, related to this notion here about.
It's at the bottom. Young people stay.
Thank you. Bring kids back home, young people stay and, or they actually move here. So some of these conversations were very similar, it sounded like. We just didn't sort them right, right in the box. This says, Thriving River Arts District. What is that vision? Thriving, there's a good word, with thriving.
Put that out there initially. It's, thriving, right now it's more of a consensual place. It's there, things are moving that way. And we also talked in the session about being the riverfront redevelopment, which is that actual city board that's kind of overseeing this. And because it will expand and the vision is that it's a gathering place. It's a place to bring people to live, to commerce and to recreate. That is by virtue of tax breaks.
Well, that's okay, leave it there. So that vision is thriving and it's related here to the redevelopment of the waterfront.
And there, your point was it has regional, the regional infrastructure too. My notes probably didn't organize the spots or justice.
No, I don't think it's your notes.
Well, again, you all need to share this to see if there's sort of agreement on what your vision is. I mean, I would also, that's part of what I'm hoping to do. Again, we're not gonna get down to, do we all have consensus, et cetera, but how many times does this show up? Are there consistencies in these conversations which look like they are emerging? You got number one sticky, we're getting some traction there.
I think when we talk about from a county level, you know, when I started to come to have driving into Asheville to work, and I'm a real pragmatist in that, I think, and also very visual and looking out here and seeing, you know, things done. So when I drive across the Jefferson Bridge and I look to the right, I don't see what I see now. I see Chattanooga, I see Savannah. Now, if part of that is, the River Arts has started that down there, but I see bigger than that. You know, I, I, my vision is not a water tower with old propane on it. My vision is big. I mean, it's like, you know, people wanna live down there, eat all the time and just a, a lot of different things down there because it's an area that could be very beautiful and could be developed and could be a showcase piece for not only Buckingham County, but Nashville too. And that brings kids, it keeps kids stay here and gives kids jobs and it could be all kinds of different things down there.
And that's what this says, the economic opportunities, all aspects of the community are celebrated and heard. All right, all aspects.
Respect from diverse.
So diverse in terms of what? Perspective, lifestyle? Gender, race, what, all those things?
Yeah, I think that's every.
Everything.
Yeah.
And how would you know, in terms of celebrated and heard, and again, those are, how, how, what was the discussion in your groups about? How do those things get celebrated and heard? How does that voice get heard?
I said that. I think that, I mean, I think when we don't try to put everybody in some mold or some box or some framework and we can recognize the beauty and the value of all of the above. I mean, I think that's, that's what I, what I meant. And, and then, and, and I think when we're, when we have those glasses on, we can see things that will take us to places that we can't even imagine right now. But when we, when, when we're trying to fit them in our limited lens, I think we do ourselves a disservice. For, I mean, one example would be, just in terms of the river, is that, kind of just teeing off that, I see, I know it has potential for, you know, more parks and bringing away some jobs and things, but I love it now. I think the people down there are interesting and I think they're working hard and they're, they're, they're kind of going the uncharted territory and they, you know, make some sacrifices and it's not all hurting, but God, they're out there trying. And, you know, I see beauty in that. I see beauty in that entrepreneurial spirit and these crazy people. Do I agree with everything that goes on there? Not particularly, but I see, I see value in letting that all be explored and getting there. So it's, I don't, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be this ultimate, we, we don't, I don't know that, part of the vision exists now if we will, if we will, if we will let it be, if we will, if we will, if we will recognize the gifts that, you know, are there.
That's helpful to me, but I've not seen the, seen the area. So what I'm hearing is that it is what it is.
You really shouldn't be driving across the bridge looking.
Yeah, it's like a good peripheral vision.
He's that person that we're not getting out of.
There, there are dilapidated buildings and there are also pink art studios. There are delicious pizzas places and then there's, there's trucks. I mean, it is just, there's twelve bones. There, you know, it, it is, it is crazy, but, but there, but there's goodness down there already.
And I also heard sort of the, on the spirit of it, which is.
There's a good spirit.
Yeah. Hard to box in.
It's a real community when we did that inner city visit.
It's a community that I would hope would be respected.
This one says, when David became the leader. And what does that mean? Is that his vision or is that sort of the question about?
I think, I think, I think the vision and also the ability to, he's demonstrated over many years to hear people out and on people's ideas. And then he's also had the ability to know, he may not be the greatest numbers person perhaps in the world, but he knows how to delegate. And so I think by being able to delegate, he was able to, is able to bring people on the board. You know, like fifteen years ago, he said, we're gonna have a new courthouse. People would have, you know, if you look around at a lot of the things that we see, it's because he had the vision and then the ability to delegate, to get others to carry things that were even not under his authority.
Okay, so the word I was hearing was unification and uniform. But that was an important aspect of leadership that we will, and I, I think I was just saying, it's brought you to the current state, but it also is part of the future vision. Is that the reason? Invest in education, we're gonna talk about that. More, more we less I.
That was a discussion around, I forgot about that, but around governing, respecting individual communities across and, and, and unique assets and needs. So governing from that broad perspective, but also seeing the opportunity in districts to allow more voices to be heard.
See, I think, you know, when I look down on the river and I see what I see, I don't see that without anyone that's there. I see that including whoever's there. And my, my look is all, just from my background, has always been from the economic development aspect. Part of what I did was build things and grow things. So when I look down there, man, you know, what the potential of all that. I mean, I, I look down there and I see it coming up and connecting into Asheville and, you know, and, and I miss just certain things that I, that I see. And so when I, when I say more we less I, I want more people to go down there. I want more people to come into, I want people to see the beauty of Candlar, you know, and, and the uniqueness of Candlar and Lashville. I don't want those places to be ignored, you know, in, in receiving their development. But also when I drive across a bridge, I look down on the river and I'm thinking, man, boy, it's amazing what we could do there. Or, you know, they're off of, you know, on the way to Barnetville and you just see. You can't get in this spot, I think you all said something about districts. I can't personally get so locked up in Candlar that I forget about, you know, the people on the, on the river. And I need to, you know, and I go down there some, but, you know, I don't know as much about it, you know, as, as I need to. Just your kids on that board, so let's make, you know, maybe get rid of them. We need, you know, we need to be able to just not worry about what I think and just try to, I don't like, you know, little clips and things like that, they're kind of annoying.
So what I'm hearing is that this is respecting individual communities and uniquenesses and actually connecting them in ways that all can experience and appreciate.
And I think that goes back to how we said about the River Arts District. It would be a disservice to make that look like the more parks. It would be a big disservice because.
Cause you have built more parks, right?
Right. And to build on what makes that, you know, for lack of a better word, quirky. The fact that people, I mean, I know what it's like to start a small business and the fact that that area led people to wanna come there and felt comfortable enough to start a new business.
Honor, serve, or service. Is this honor part related to the earlier discussion?
Some of it was, but there was also the discussion that one of the opportunities, that in both groups, that I was in, the opportunity stand challenges is you can't address issues or provide services the same way everywhere across the county and city. The example that I talked about, that places is, you know, how do you even know development or address housing issues is different in Barnetville or Sandyville and Ashville. And that's both, there's both opportunity and challenge, you know, understanding that.
I've heard this sort of in, in terms of how folks, Violet and I will communicate, you know, in varying ways, you have to meet people where they are, which is the good news and the bad news. Similar to what you're saying, is to serve people in a, yeah, and, and to meet them where they are and it, it makes it more complicated, more challenging and more encouraging.
But I think the point in both those groups, you don't wanna miss, is it's not just rural Arden. It's like Mountain's different than Candlar and Candlar's different than Fairdale. I mean, there's similarities, but there's a sense of community that's unique to what we got on.
So what is, what is an example of how you serve those communities differently?
I talk about lots of them on the helping units service side. We've hired layman activists in all those communities. Instead of having a government building, which is where we started in all those communities, we hired people to live and work there to be our face in those communities. So for me to go say I can hire MSW and send them in your community and they'll honor your community, they probably could in terms of skill level, but to hire somebody who works and lives in that community? Do I more likely to go to them places and ask to connect me to the formal system? I think that's what we're trying to get, that is kind of the statement.
Any other discussions that could link to that?
I always say that our communities have really different personalities, Sandyville's is so different from Broad River, Fairville and Kelly. And you have to know those personalities in order to really serve them well. And I like to expect you're gonna go where they are, because if you don't, you're just gonna get out there.
Yeah, and I, just I described table three puts so many things on one sheet, but I think let folks be who they are. You know, we, we like that. We don't want everybody to be one way. We wanna have folks be who they are. I think Joe, that was Joe, what Joe said. And I think that's one of our strengths, that we do have that. But whoever you are, we like it, we want you to be who you are. We don't wanna gentrify you and just put something on top of it. And I think a lot of people are worried legitimately that the river will be gentrified somewhat like the downtown we can. And there is a process. When the desirable area, the property values go up, the scrappy, interesting, funky people can't afford it a lot of times and have to move somewhere else. So I think there's, there's always a fear in the urban area that we're gonna lose that by our success. We're gonna be a victim of, of what we've done right and, and somehow we have to work hard to keep that. People being who they are everywhere, not just in, let's keep on moving them out like, like some people are you, we have them.
Well, and that actually, this is a really important, if there's agreement on this, this is pretty important because that can really translate to different policies that you all set aside too. When I talk about, you know, a community that tries to live its principles and how difficult that can be, you know, in Chapel Hill, we have thought that we should not let folks, that we all should be healthy. One of the ways that translates into policies is there's probably like not even a handful of restaurants you can drive through to get a meal in Chapel Hill. Because that's too easy to get fast food calories. It promotes a lifestyle that they've said is not what we want. So that's just an example of how that plays out.
So they ban drive food? Did the local people ban?
Yeah, you, you, there's, yeah, it's development order.
Now, just, I mean, the point is that not we're never gonna wanna do that here, but so like that community hanging together is just one example, it's not something we're trying to do here.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm gonna get sidetracked. It's an example of a, that you can develop policies that actually, you know, live your principles. So if this is a principle.
This is exactly what people in the community do not want. This, this is exactly what people in the community do not want. It's that kind of thing, I'm here being adequate for unhealthy food, but I hate healthy food. And, uh, that, that is the wrong course to take.
But that's why you don't live in Chapel Hill. I mean, I guess the example is, she was giving an example of Chapel Hill, not, not here. That's not us, just so you know. Not Chris, do not write that down. We are not talking about that. So, but, but then maybe there's, what you're saying is maybe there's something here that we could, you know...
No, I, I get that. I, I just, I didn't know they had power. I mean, I just had never heard of that.
Well, that, and so that actually comes to the role of government discussion that I do think we wanna have.
Get this kind of side, right?
That is a very different, that is the perception of the role of government.
But then starts changing people from letting them be what they...
Well, that's what I'm saying. That is, that is, that is, it's a local decision of what is the role of government in that regard. And so they've made that decision that that is something they can and wanna get into. I'm not saying anything about that one here.
No, I'm just proposing that here, I just, again, I'm more interested in...
That community made that, did that course forward? Like, I used to live in Aspen, Colorado, and there was forty acres of it. And you could never increase density. There were no neon signs and there was no sign bigger than two by four. That's what they chose, Aspen.
Didn't mean to get sidetracked. Did you have a point?
I think, well, I was just looking at that, what they did in Chapel Hill is not representative of where we are. Let folks be who they are.
Well, that's absolutely counter, yeah. But I'm saying let folks be who they are. In some respects, when you're talking about development policies, you know, if you can create a way to have the, what was the word? The quirky, which I love the word. I mean, it's an intriguing word. Uh, the quirky as well as the corporate, as well as, you know, the entrepreneur, whatever it is. I mean, that, that's what I was suggesting is that there, there is a way that you can do that if that's the direction that you all think you wanna have.
If that's who we want to be, yeah, which we are.
In the other discussion came from the preserving the culture in this area and allowing people to be that way. Whether it be to Holly's point, we count on, you know, the River Arts allowing them to be that way. Or, you know, the people that are out in, you know, Lester, Canver, living in, in the, you know, in Barnetville. You know, they don't wanna feel like that, that their beliefs are threatened. Or they wanna be able to be, you know, included as a very vital part of this community. And have a, have a, have a real say. They don't want the way they live to be different and be changed and, you know. You know, that's, that's, I think, we were having a discussion, I think you said, you know, wanna necessarily use the road word, you know, wrong, you know, the way you are is wrong. And what they, they want to be, you know, but, you know, I, I look at the mountain culture and I'm a big defender of the way we have it in the past and trying to keep it that way. So this is where I come from.
So it's...
And the respect.
It's not, you know, it's, tolerance is not a word that, it's, it's more respecting, you know, the people's belief system. Because some people are very rigid in their belief system and they appear to, to not be tolerant. But, you know, it's just the way they believe, it's the way they, it's the way they were raised. You know, so you can let them be who they are, it's the way they were raised, it's how they...
What else? We, we saw up here I-26 is the economic engine, regional...
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, which this was the road in I-26 where I actually mentioned twice. I've put them together, I'm not too sure if it's the same kind of conversation. Um, so in your vision, um, I-26 becomes an economic en- engine? It is, what does this mean? Somebody else...
Connects us with the Ohio Valley I Interstate. And it's a very dangerous intersection right now, but I don't think we've had a fatality, but it's probably an accident waiting to happen. Cause you go...
Bulling Bridge?
Yeah.
We've had quite a few accidents.
It's something we've discussed as a community for over twenty-five years. A plan was introduced, probably twenty-five years ago. I know they, there was, well, there are different pushes and different times and our community has not been able to come, come together on one plan. So the DOT, of course, drops it to the bottom and the community doesn't agree.
So the plan, what is the, what is the, um, what is it that you're, wanna affect here? What's the interest funds? I'm not even sure the exact position is, but what are you interested in having happen here? Is it safety or...
They're not engaging, I-26 is, is built...
I mean, I think you're talking about the connector. It's not really very...
The connector, that's what we're talking about. The I-26 is gonna go through Ashville and there'll be a connector on the other side. So break it down to two forty across Bulling Bridge, lead back to nineteen twenty-three.
It's a critical piece of infrastructure that we, everybody wants to see expedited and completed. And so it's a little bit easier said than done, but we're definitely making progress.
It's been, I've looked at the West Coast Bridge, but I came up here when I was, when I, well, when I was ten years old. Uh, so that's fifty-six years ago, been right across the same bridge. You know, we've gotta get a straight shot to expand it to them, so.
So it's actually build it. That's the vision, so this is there when it's not there now.
Build, I hope.
Right.
But build it that is respectful and includes people's, I mean, like, all this stuff is not just get or done. It's not just get or done, um, but it's do it for sure. If that makes sense at all.
Well, and so in some respects, you know, well, one of the things we're looking at in all these conversations, what's rising to the top? As, um, you know, as we, as you talk about, as you put your effort, as you put, you know, align your resources and you all are resources, you're a voice to this issue, whatever the issue is that rises to be important. So that's part of what we're hoping to be able to do, is kind of what rises to the top. Uh, and I don't know whether there's some things that are sort of sequencing issues as well. Um, so I'm cognizant of the time, first of all, but it's twelve and lunch is ready. Phil, I'm gonna make a break, I don't know, what do you wanna do, keep going to this? Okay. I think we should... Huh?
Do you wanna finish that?
Well, this is a good conversation and I want people to not be distracted. Uh, so, but from a logistical standpoint, I was hoping to get to this point in case I needed to rearrange things at lunch. Um, so I'm thinking out loud.
We forget ourselves ten minutes?
Sure, let's keep going through it, let's, let's satisfy that.
All right. So this says safe family community. I hear those words, but safe I understand, I assume. But, um, family, we go with one of those ones, I wanna go, what does that mean? In, in your discussions, oh, we've put tough on crime as related to safe, but not family. What were the discussions in your, in your, in your small groups? Why? And is this a, the vision or is there something then that, um, what areas do you need to be working on? Is this on the right list?
In, in our, in the two groups that I was in, it was the goal that, um, create an environment that our kids, grandkids, uh, wanna come back to. So offering opportunities through job development, um, to encourage, um, a safe environment, um, physically and mentally, and basically an area they wanna come back to.
Any other different take on this?
You can talk to...
No, no, I'm just, I'm just clarifying, then I'll, those, you were asking about those topic, topic.
But I think actually, what you just said was this part of the conversation you want here. Bring your kids back home, you know, the people stay here.
I think to create a condition that businesses want to come and expand, which includes being safe, good place to raise your kid, good economic conditions. So I think it's all part of the package that entices people to, to create jobs here.
I, um, I, I wasn't part of a group that said either one of those, but I really, um, I like, I'm thinking about this topic a lot around domestic violence right now and sexual assault. And, and the tough on crime part, I, I think is super intriguing because part of what happens when we talk about domestic violence is that we've got, we've gotta do more for the victim, we've gotta do more than, you know what? We have to get serious about the perpetrator and we've got to change that tolerance that, you know, it's, and, and so, yes, we continue to do more services for the victim and make that happen. But let's also, because that is a crime. It's a crime that we treat differently. So I, I like that and that's an area I'm particularly obviously passionate about right now. And in terms of the family too, this, the safe family, it's the same idea. It's like having, that's where the majority of our calls come from, right? Our domestic calls. So we can talk about, you know, and I thought Kathy made a really interesting, um, reference to home invasions, which are, you know, is a problem out in the sunsets, but most of those invasion, most of those invaders were within the house already in terms of, of the violence. So I think that's an important theme that, uh, that I would love to, for us to take to the next level. To make, to help our women and children be safer in this area.
And, and when I, when I think of that, you know, I, it, it goes into the, you know, the, the mountain culture that I talk about. And as Gordon knows, I come from, you know, a, a strong position of, of, uh, faith-based community in churches and, and the collaboration of them and, and, and the values associated with that. And, and creating a strong family unit and, and being, being tough on, on, on crime in certain areas and making sure that, that areas don't go without. And we do whatever we can in all of our departments to strengthen, you know, that, that, that family and to protect those children and to, and to help educate them and bring them out of the situation that they're in. And that, part of that includes bringing in our, uh, not our schools and our churches and, and people together to, uh, to protect those kids and families and, and, and lives. And, and, and taking a strong stance on that and not, not being, not wasting on any of that. We can, all of those things can work together because if you strengthen the families in Duncan County, you, you, you allow children to, to aspire to come back here because they see hope not only in a job, but in a place that they can live and feel safe and feel comfortable. And not bullying as, as we've heard. And we, oh my goodness, you, you create that kind of atmosphere.
Why do you do the strength of the family?
Pardon me?
Define strength of family.
Divide strength of...
No, define.
Define strength of family.
Well, I think that, you know, strengthening the family is what, what everybody would think about strengthening the family is that, is that, uh, I, uh, I love deep people and dearly my family and I will work hard for my family. That's my definition of it, my definition of it. And I'm not really sure, you wanna clarify your question?
Well, you said, you said what, what we need to do, what we can to strengthen the family. And so I, I just, I would, I'd like to hear what, how you feel about that.
Okay, okay, so let me tie that word back to you a little bit. So let me tie that back to the mountain culture, specifically coming from, um, a faith-based position where I believe that the, the traditional faith-based community in this county is being pushed out. Okay, so that...
Pushed out of what?
Pushed out, becoming very tolerant or they're, they're whatever just because simply they have certain strong core beliefs.
Is this voluntary or is this involuntary push out?
You know, maybe some of it's, you know, actual and some of it's perceived or whatever, but I, I understand that community very well and that perception is out there. So what I'm saying is that it's a mistake in the county to do that because if you do that, it will affect the family. So that's where I'm going. So if, if, if we as a group recognize that that's a community we wanna strengthen, because if we do that, we'll just have stronger families. So that's what I'm saying. If, if the whole, if, let's say that we decided that a goal, as you said, you don't wanna have two hundred goals. So let's say that we decided that, that one of our goals is to, is to, uh, strengthen the family unit, reduce crime. And I recognize there's different descriptions of what a family is, I understand that. But part of that is a description that comes from a faith-based community. It is very clear in that description. And also that teaching strengthens the family. And what I'm saying is that if we're gonna strengthen the family, you can't push that part out. You want to strengthen that part. You wanna strengthen that part of it, that will help in that, in that goal.
So let me ask this question, cause this was really, the other question is, what's the county government's role in achieving that, this vision? So under this notion of having, I, I think I understand being tough on crime and, um, having a safe community. I, I heard, what I thought you heard said, Joe, was to broaden your support network. In other words, you might include the faith-based community as part of the support network that you might offer as a strengthening.
Cause it's very important in strengthening families in Duncan County, yeah.
So, but, but question I guess is, for all of this, is how, what is the county's role in achieving this vision?
That's why I...
I don't, there's a vision, but I don't see how that we, as a member of Salem, can make that work. Cause you do have a faith-based community, you know. We have to give other areas opportunities, but mainly they basically, you know, they pick up opportunities. I agree with Holly, we do not need a man beating a woman. That is the worst thing that I can ever think of. When you go into economic times that are bad and somebody's had it, then they don't have it and the guy's out trying to find work or, or whatever. And then the wife's there, you know, the kids are hungry and nest in nests and all of a sudden you have these boil ups. So it's not all that, that it's always the situation that the guy comes home and he just beats his wife. It's, it's a, it's a situation that, that's brought forward and that goes in the police side of it, you know. But I think any, we're faith-based, whatever, if we can, if we can help kids, women, uh, without having the crime part, you know. Six hundred people work for her in, in this county, it's the biggest part. She has to go through a lot of this and, and see what's going on. Um, I'm, I would, uh, I've explained to, I've only had one son-in-law and I explained to him if he ever hit my daughter, that I killed him. And I told him it wasn't a threat, it's a promise. So, because I don't think a man should ever hit a woman. That's just where I'm at. But I understand when times are bad and things do happen, uh, they shouldn't. But, uh, and I want the kids to stay here and I want them, like Joe, I want his kids to grow up here and mine have. I've got a grandson, he's twenty-four, he's still here, he may have to go somewhere else because of the jobs, uh, in the area. But, you know, he's trying and afraid of time, but, uh, crimes against women is probably the worst thing or, or females, let's be, over females, young females, older females, that don't matter.
The stats for young females are just horrible.
I think to get back to the county's role here, I think one thing we can do pretty good is to do goal setting. Couple of examples come to mind. This predates anybody except for the Kathy and, well, three on the edges here. It was the cell towers. We limited the number of new cell towers many years ago. We eliminated billboards, no new billboards. We did a count, Ellen Frost did a countdown to zero. We didn't kill, we don't euthanize pets. We, Joe's proposed and we're gonna be talking about a park within a certain geographic region of everybody who lives here. So I think we can use our bully pulpit, so to speak, to set goals that increase the faith community, the nonprofits and different people to meet the goals because then we have a shared vision. This is bad. We want to have, we wanna reduce the domestic violence by seventy-five percent next year. We wanna go to zero. We, you know, and, and I think by doing that, we use the media, we use the faith community. Sometimes, and we have a reputation here of contracting with nonprofits so we don't reinvent the wheel. We're, we're the Bunkham model. We contract, Wake County in the triangle where you are does it themselves. So we're, we're kind of the other extreme. We speak at conferences, we're, we're the collaborators there, the do it big government. And we just have different views about that. So I think goals is one thing we can do. And we, we need to get with the people that know what reasonable goals are because you don't wanna put something on the shelf, have a big splash and then just forget about it. So it's gotta be realistic and it's gotta be well thought out before you just throw it out. So it's got to be realistic and it's got to be well thought out before you just throw it out there.
Okay, so I heard that, the other thing I heard was through your voice to elevate the issue into the public realm. That that was another way that you can have a role in affecting change in all of these. And that's, I guess that's where I thought you were going, Joe, was with the notion about the faith-based organization's role in strengthening the family in ways that they're comfortable doing that. Whether that was.
That's exactly what I was going.
Well, but is that, again, what's the county's role in that particular piece except to maybe elevate this issue?
Well, I think the county's role is, let's say that we were, those families, they can be a little bit of a polarizing term. So let's go to children and roles with, you know, domestic violence and all these things. God, it's my heart and where I'm at on that, you know, I'm not as strong as you are, but I'm pretty darn close to where you are. Probably wouldn't be where you are. But, you know, we should be very inclusive in all of our resources. Whether it be Ellen, whether it be faith-based, whether it be, and our goal is, as a county, is to bring in whatever help we can or to strengthen and to protect our children and to protect the units of that family. I don't, I don't, I want to make sure that we're not ignoring any part of the community when it comes to strengthening that family unit and protecting our children and women.
I think what I heard you say is that you'd be inclusive in support of the family, be inclusive of the services. Is that what you said? I'm not quite sure what that means.
I think what's great about our community, every different realm of differences. If we, if one voice, one leader says as a community, or we want to end domestic violence. Every aspect of our community, whether we're purple or whether we're green, whether we worship the moon, whether we, whatever. We put that aside and work together to the goal. So it doesn't matter where you're coming from, if leadership sets goals, this community has worked hard to get there. But it's up to us to say what our goal is.
Well, to that end, I've been working really hard on talking to publics. I think I've told you all this several times, but I mean, just the fact I was doing it, so hopefully it's not a big surprise. But I've tried to, I've tried to say I'm interested in this, I've tried to say, I've talked to people, I've tried to say I'm exploring and maybe if I've left anybody out, I'm so sorry. But it's talking to public safety, leadership in public safety, talking to leadership that deals with women that are, you know, victims of domestic violence, that are, that's talking about legal services, that are talking about public, the DA's office and whatnot. So anyway, I'm on the road and as soon as I feel like there's some cohesiveness to the data, but it's pretty profound, I'm happy to share it, we're just not there yet. So, just so, so, you know.
I think Holly's right even there, but you don't, you don't just have abuse to some women, you have abuse on all people. Men and women and the whole realm. I think all, I think any kind of abuse is wrong.
Yeah, it's not just men that abuse women, wouldn't it?
Oh yeah, they're abusive and, but if you guys say the same thing, if you got an older gentleman that cannot do anything. Sometimes they're very abusive to that person. They utilize what he gets on our social security or something like that and they've got him in the home. They're abusive there, so.
It is absolutely all horrid. I think in terms of, you know, thinking strategically or with limited resources, we have to be targeted to how, what we're going to approach first and how we're going to go forward. We start taking a bite out of apple. So, because as you've said so many times, we can't do everything, we just can't. So I think we can set a bar of, you know, intolerance to all abuse. But in terms of us kind of rolling up our sleeves and beginning to determine what are the trainings, what are the investments, what are the protocols, what are the collaborations, you know, we'll have to prioritize where we're going to start based on the need that we're seeing and the legality frankly of what happens.
I think that topic has been explored and I think, well, I think we're at a stopping point for the moment. I think we need to take a lunch break, is that all right?
I agree with you.
So let me take a look at this list too and then we'll just pick this back up and see. Again, my thought was, is there some consensus of what you want to work on next year? This sounds like there's, it's depressing energy, but there's energy around this particular topic as well. And lunch is out, out in the lobby here right now.
Up in that Little Town Hall.
And what are the lunch instructions?
Lunch instructions are, can you get your lunch?
Small rice. If you can get your lunch and get settled back, you can probably. Thank you for lunch, wonderful, very good.
How's the cookie going, Colores?
So here's what I'd like to propose, this sort of the basic outline and sort of tweaking what we're going to, what our original plan was a bit. I'd like to continue sort of exploring these goal areas, looking at defining and maybe clarifying what was meant by all of that. And then I'd actually like to draw a staff in the room to kind of talk a little bit more about what's already in place to support that work. And then shift the conversation to what else is under the county or the board's authority or ability to influence. Because this last conversation, for instance, around domestic violence pointed out a tremendous concern. And I think it would be right for understanding kind of what's, what's already out there and then where is, what else might need to happen, whether that's under something that the board's premises or the county might want to do or in partnership with another more appropriate or not even more appropriate, another kind of resource. So getting a bit more clarity around what's actually under your control or ability to influence, I think might be helpful to point out. And then some other, some other, somebody else said something at lunch about data. And one of the things that I'd like to end this conversation with is the next steps conversation. So if there are things that you feel like you'd really like to know more about for whatever reason, you know, that might be an appropriate direction that you'd give to staff or what is the next step? Here's some more data we'd like to get because we'd like to inform our decision-making around whatever it is, whatever that topic is. So that's kind of how.
We don't like the facts getting away.
Pardon me?
We don't like the facts getting away.
I know that that's probably not true, but.
Just kidding.
Yeah, I know you are. Also at the very end, sorry, just sitting. We'd like to add in this conversation that staff actually asked for, I thought pretty clearly. And that was making sure that they have a better understanding on, about ways that they can support the law so that you can be, you know, you can operate at your best, which is that conversation we want to have also. So I'm just going to add back in something about, and it might just be a simple conversation. What are they doing now that's really working for you and helping you? And what are the ways that they could do something differently to be even more supportive and helpful? Because I certainly heard that as a concern that they have.
And can we turn it around to what we could do?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. All right, that's my conclusion for the rest of the time together. But it might be, and that we will not get to these two questions here, which of these areas are priorities to work on and what's the plan for working on those? I'd really, I think, like to make sure that you have a better understanding of what's already in place before you actually make that decision. Is that all right? So. Job skills and jobs slash skill gap. What about that? What's the issue there? There is one, you think we need to, you need to work on, do something about it, what was the discussion?
Discussion was around what does the community look like 15 years out? And making sure that where we're investing in economic development is where there'll be jobs 15 years from now. So being strategic about those investments and that, there had to do with that other one around demographic data.
So is it a gap or is it really, you'd like to have these, this is an alignment you're after?
I think alignment, it's a double.
Okay. So, yeah, this demographic trends, we put down here. So what was the discussion about demographic trends? What is happening in your community in terms of demographics?
Well, we want to know who was leading the county and who was coming to the county. What's, how is the, how many, one of the goals was, is we really would like our children or grandchildren to want to stay in Duncan County, want to work with them. So, and the discussion got on, well, how many actually have left Duncan County? And so that's where the demographic comes from.
So is this a question, what are the demographic trends?
Yes.
Well, it was, and I had to be sure, Hannah, the point earlier, that there are some of them that we know aren't positive about, who moves here is not a negative, but they don't tend to be people, young children. And our natural worst are on a downward trend. So that would tell us we're aging, past aging community in this area. That was more, I don't know where we were going, around that young people, stay in the group.
Okay. Minorities don't come here.
The projections went on minorities, downward trend.
And we're a nice focus and white now. Some are cranks, a little, we're not.
Projections are Hispanic, well, African-American.
So this is a good big question that, you know, there's, there's a real good study of that. Might actually, again, help you understand and define what, what to do, what your response might be because it sounds like a closer examination would be helpful.
Makes your day.
Yeah, yeah. So then that's why I actually think that it's fundamental. Not that you've actually had, you haven't really had the chance to really study it, it sounds like. There are bits and pieces out there. Am I accurate in making that assumption?
We think our board, the information's there, it's there. I've seen it presented by.
From our perspective as a staff, we can, we can gather that and give it to you so that you, so that we keep that as a foundation of what we're working on definitions.
There's an amazing map that shows the in and out of migration. We've seen that somewhere we've been.
Tom Tavich does it every year and proceeds to help the human service board and Jane there. All of those demographics from jobs and rights.
It's like Detroit's just getting crushed and everybody's leaving Detroit. We're one of the in-migration areas.
But I saw a thing that they, the younger, they're much more likely to move. They're much more receptive to migrating to other places and are doing that.
And I think that that data is absolutely out that easily. I mean, I would want to make sure that before we ask for data that we, you know, determine that we were open to utilizing it and really being open. And I sincerely think things up here are great, but I do think that there would be some challenges for some of the things, some of the, for example, you know, one of the, one of the trends in terms of, you know, younger population is that they are less about cars and more, and less about homeownership and there's more. I mean, not everybody, not everybody to a person, but just if you look at the trends of what's changing and communities are, that were resilient during the Great Recession had this mixture of housing, particularly multifamily housing. So, and other infrastructure. And so we, I mean, it's great to know that, but are we going to, are we going to be willing to be open to our part in moving our community forward to really do that? Or are we going to bump up against, well, we like it the way it is and we don't want to change, that type of thing? So that's all, I just, I just don't want people to go into a lot of trouble if that, if we're just not, if we're not there. And that's cool if we're not there. But if we are there, you know, I think it's, I don't, I don't want to, I think it's, I don't think it's going to be an easy conversation at all.
I think it's about jobs. I think it's about jobs. People, they're not in the healthcare industry or healthcare and unless they're really, it's very, very tough. And until we get better at jobs, free, whether it be more of an, it will become STEM schools and engineering and putting, it's premature to talk about where people are going to live until we find places for them to work.
I think my point wasn't about a particular initiative, it was more about like finding out, learning. I mean, I think that's a really good point and that, but I think to find out what it is we need to do, we need to ask the people that are reading. Or we need to go and ask them as opposed to me just thinking it's my idea and because I read one book one day, you know. But that's regardless, I think there'll be some, I think there'll be some difficult decisions that we would need to make.
Well, and I think the other thing I heard you say is that sometimes this data might actually challenge our assumptions about what we hold dear.
That's all I was saying, I wasn't given a prescription of what we need to do as a community. I was just putting it out there clearly that it could be, it could be a challenging conversation.
But the information there, we don't have to go create it.
No.
At the economic summit, I mean, all of this was presented in great detail that was had by Chamberlain not long ago.
And I guess my question is, what, what do you want to do about that? I mean, the data's there and how you want to use it is the question.
I think Commissioner Frost, basically we create, and also Commissioner Jones is, is when you create the jobs, you create the environment and then it's up to people to stay or go and that's the way it should be.
Speaking of jobs, and we're talking about this, making sure that we understand sort of, that there are jobs, that healthcare has the alignment between the skills that they need. And then this diverse economy, I'm assuming this is actually probably more likely a line with this. When people say diverse, diverse in what way?
I think I can speak about that a little bit. When I started working back in the seventies, we did have a large manufacturing community here with a lot of manufacturers, not just in Duncan, but even outside. And over time, that manufacturing base, we still have a good base, but it has shrunk considerably from what it used to be. And we still want more manufacturing, but along the way, you know, tourism, I remember tourism used to not be that important part of our economy, but it's become that. Healthcare has grown, I think the, what we were talking about over here was that we want all of these, but we want it, the market to be segmented with all of them.
So, so that all your eggs aren't in one particular basket?
Right.
And in other places where we've had more conversation like this, you're getting kind of a taste of this. You know, there might be a discussion about what kinds of manufacturing do, are consistent with our community values. And I'm thinking particularly around a conversation a couple of months ago, a couple of weeks ago, about a focus on the natural environment. And that they were really interested in defining then small manufacturers that were consistent with the natural environment that they were hoping to preserve. So, you know, that's a, that's an economic development strategy that they're, that they're working towards. Other counties, and I'm going to just use, not here, Orange County. You know, it's like manufacturing has been this dirty word. Academic development's been this dirty word until they had a conversation to say, well, we believe that it needs to be done in these particular ways and economic justice is sustainable. And we really delved down into what that meant so that they could come up with at least some manufacturers that seemed consistent with an economic development vision that they had. So it's not now, the county has really repositioned themselves to say, it's not that we're not open for business, but yeah, we are, we do have these kinds of requirements. So these are the kinds of places or the kinds of manufacturing that would be a good fit for us and them, them for us and us for them. One of the interesting things that we have in our communities, no matter what kind of data we pull, you've got the whole change in, the generational change is what's important. But we also, our grandparents for the most part viewed factory floors as just, you know, dirty places and they're high tech. So we deal with both ends of the.
So we, we deal with both ends of the spectrum on attitude and, and how it grows and goes forwards. I think it makes a big difference, in particular in our community.
I guess I think, in terms of some of this stuff, I'm not sure, I'm still not so sure we're going with it, but it feels to me like, and I haven't been part of these conversations that much, I kind of go around the edges, Adam, but it seems like there's groups in this community that have really explored, you know, the diverse community and the strategies. I'm not, I mean, I'd hate to assume that this group could, you know, oh, yeah, yeah. And, and, and so I'd like for us to kind of bring what that, that our added value to the conversations that have already happened, as opposed to starting all over again. I think that'd be a very use of our time.
And actually, that's, I, I completely agree with you, that's kind of, I want to kind of make sure we know what these things were, but, but the question is, you know, what's already in place to support these efforts? And, and then, so what, I like the words you use, added value. What added value does the board bring to this? You know, what, what is there, what is your ability to be able to influence these decisions? And, and so that's almost sort of despite an educational opportunity for this board, as much as anything. I can't answer that question, that what's already in place to support these. But the big areas that I, that I see here are this development, the, the jobs, um, the diversification of the economy, the, um, the family, the crime, the, this says reasonable government costs and benefits, maintain, sustain reasonable cost, government costs slash, is that benefits?
Yeah.
Benefits. Um, and that, so that's a little different than these things which have already been discussed. And then this one says, address rural poverty.
Rural.
Ru- ru- ru-.
Rural peace.
Rural peace.
Rural, that's a tough word. So, you know, again, I, I don't know what that means, or what is, what's already in place to do that? Who else is working on that issue, who else cares about that? Um, and then what it is that you think you all can or should do about that.
Education?
Yes, rural.
One of the things we always hear is, and I'm not a community, but I'm going to say Monroeville because it's north, how people who live in poverty there, address their poverty issues are really different than they are as they get closer to the, to the larger city. And housing solutions might not be the same thing, so there's different ways that you have to address the communities in a different way. We all have things in place.
But how is that on?
Well, let's, can, can we just act, can I ask you to just sort of share some of those things? Because I think that could be informative.
You can probably share, but in terms of, uh, like, there's more, and anybody correct me, when you're in, um, one of the towns or the, or the city, how, the housing that would be available, or the organizations that work on housing around that, are gonna have a different solution than if you are in a very rural area. It's hard to fill, it's very hard to fill. They, I would say they depend on family a different way. They, um, a mobile, monthly solution as opposed to a, um, yeah, yeah, a habitat. Habitats, that more can be a solution there than there are.
Sometimes they own their homes, but live in poverty.
It's just not the same.
So, that's an example, in housing, there's, you, you mentioned, uh, at least habitat, and probably a couple of others. Again, the reason I'm hammering this down is that you can't do everything. You shouldn't be doing everything. And so who else is involved in doing this work? And what are the ways that you can complement that work? So, that would help you define where your priorities need to lie.
That's where we have to depend on staff, and, and assess that, you know, that's one that, you know, and then the financial side is, is over there. We've got X amount of dollars and so many dollars coming in. So, as us, as I think as commissioners, the dependence is more to them than, we, we ask them questions because we have got, I got five years in trying to figure out how to help someone that doesn't have anything. So, us making rules, I think it's a little too hasty, you know, for seven people. I think that we can ask questions to the staff, and what's, what's your thing? So, how can we accomplish this? Or how can you accomplish it, not us? Because that's basically what happens.
So, so let's just take a potential constituent question. Somebody comes to you and says, I'm really, and I'm making this up, because I don't know, uh, somebody comes to you and says, I'm, I'm really, you know, I'm in a bad situation, I can't afford the housing, I don't know what I'm gonna do, I don't know where I'm gonna live, how can you help me?
I call Bill, Bill Margulke, Ed and Jerry. He does, they do a lot of people like that, but.
But I think the answer, the part of the answer is, what are those resources that we have?
Yeah, we have to do a lot of the resources. But there is Evelyn, and there is the cherries, and, you know, you've got the good nonprofits that, that try to help people. But then you go back to Stone and her group, they have to pay X amount of dollars, no matter what the dollar number is. And say, okay, we have to make this work for all the people that we're trying to help. The number is not a lot bigger. That's one thing, I want, you know, the staff to, the, the whole package, and that really goes rural when you're, you're bumping the big steps, so, I think. And, you know, the cities, we can compact them, we have the projects that are in the cities, there's different other types of housing in the cities, but it goes about the same thing. Monroeville, same, there's different areas. You don't have that, and it's going to depend on families in them areas, or you have to pull them into the city, because they can't afford, afford to live in. I, I, I don't have like that answer, she can answer.
Well, and that's part of what I'm asking is, what, what, what are the, if, if I, if I was a commissioner and I made this referral and said, how could I help this person? What would you tell them? In terms of what the county actually has, and what other resources might be available?
I'd first tell them that the county is by law with safety, you know, around all of those components, from child endangerment safety to economic safety. I mean, we are where the black stocks are, and our statute, how can they get help? They know the website, um, they web chat, they call twenty-four seven, call center will be run on any kind of issue you might have. We've had navigators in every end of the community. We've done listening sessions and, um, surveys in every end of the community, but how do they, what information you need to their community? Sometimes it's your fire chief, sometimes it's your community center, sometimes it's your school, and that's where we've attached our navigators. We've made our website so consumer friendly, you can say, I've lost my job in Nawa, um, my rent's overdue in Nawa, and it tells you all the resources and what it. Contracted out the bulk of our emergency assistance dollars to both faith and private and public charities, so people can choose the place they're more comfortable going for help. So, a few of the other, probably the piece I want to most, I, it, it's like, to me, some of the things we're talking about up there that are priorities, they're ours by law. I mean, child endangerment safety is ours by law, the county's, you know. Safety, basic economic and healthcare safety, I mean, that belongs to the county's, you know. So it isn't really a day, it's us, and how we leverage the resources of the days in the community.
And, and I think this goes back to when people call us and say what's out there, to refer to the right department, and so we're given the best information, and not trying to fix ourselves.
And I do think, um. Does that add up, by the way? And I do think, uh, when we're doing the, going around the table, I do think we have a really great staff, that one or the other of us will know what those resources are. And that's the reason we can answer some of them quickly, but maybe what I fear is we might be a little more in错了 correction sheet on some of these things.
You know, how it was just kind of coming out. Just thinking a little bit. You know, the community and her group are just amazing, at knowing what needs are based on data. It almost seems that, you know, after seeing some of the things that we've discussed and just there, that, you know, if, if we had data that showed where the needs are, and, uh, I've had one experience of them doing that. Short time, when I called to commission my, uh, conviction or vision or whatever, for, for doing parks, or being a place where children could go with their parents, not as at a monkey bar, but something where they could actually spend time, a lot of time, in rural, small areas, things within, just a few minutes of people, someone at least, they'll talk out, five minutes, it wasn't doable. And so they, they started looking where there was schools, and then churches, and then, um, parks, and then other things, and then this overlay to the economic information, and then all of a sudden, boom, you know, there were the holes. I mean, it just, just jumps right out at you. To me, that data would, would drive the, the direction of board to go, well, I feel, I've been feeling like there was a need here, but it looks like there's a need here.
So what was the policy statement in that question that you posed to them? So what was it, what was it that you asked them, that they put the data together to tell you the answer?
I just wanted to know, initially, I think the question was as simple as, uh, where are, uh, recreational areas or areas that would, you know, either be a park or a place where they could spend time, whatever, it was that general. And then they just took it and, uh, and provided this information, like, wow, you know? So what happened though was when they put the economic information over, which was some of the, the poverty, or I can't even remember what that was, it was like rent, or something. You know, when they started putting that over there is when you're, I started, and then they laid over, like, uh, you, you did put churches in there, you put other places where maybe somebody might be able to go and get that type of, uh, and, and that made a different dynamic in it. But it was, uh, the data that drove the conversation, and the data provided the real need and showed where it was.
Well, that was a gap, but I guess my question is, so, in other words, a policy statement might be something like, everybody should be within ten minutes of some kind of recreation.
It was, it was five, it was, it was five minutes and five years. You know, it was, the idea was, within five years, could we create, you know, an area where children could go within this county, in five minutes from their home, where they would be able, where, where they could have, you know, these three needs met, whatever, whatever was. Whether it was cognitive skills, whether it was certain type of learning, you know, whether it was, you know, quality family time, or whatever. And it was, it was directed at the children and, and the family, children, and whether it be a single parent, whoever, spending time with that child.
That's a good example, because the policy question was, could we in the five years have this? And then the data provided was, here's what we already have.
Here's what we already have.
A little extra information that may have the decision maker.
And, and, yeah, just in a general session, with some of, you know, I don't, nobody else has seen that information, but when you saw it, you went, uh, this might be doable, you know, after, after you laid all the data on there, so it, it might be doable. So then it directs your policy, you know, and, you know, a vision, if it wouldn't, if it didn't show that it was doable, then you'd go, there's no way we could evolve or something, but it's.
With the staff that you had, that's what you want to do, they'll figure out a way to answer your question about making it doable.
They do.
Um, you know, so I, I think, understanding what are the right questions you actually want to ask them about would be important, and what's the order in which, you know, what, what's, if you have your top five questions, what would they, what would you be asking for? If you were gonna make a point.
I, I was gonna also kind of interject, like, and when in the policy development process do we also, uh, affirm the citizens', you know, input? I mean, because, I mean, I think I've got great ideas, but I feel like there's got to be something bigger than me driving, you know, particularly if it's gonna have to do with the major investments. And, and then there's the whole level of, you know, using those, the investments, you know, in, in a way that is, is fair and equitable too. So, those, I think those are important dimensions to fold into policy development, um, in addition to, to, to data. It's a different type of data.
When was the, so, do you have, when was the last time you sort of did some, sort of check in with citizens about priorities?
When we went to three meetings.
But it wasn't systematic, I mean, it wasn't, we didn't, we didn't like give them, like, hey, what do y'all? We heard questions, but we didn't give them a process to prioritize, you know, with limited resources in your community, you know, where, where would you like to see them directly?
Yeah, there was no, no laser focus on what we did at all.
But, I have to say that, um, you know, all of us, um, who were elected, and I think that's in our DNA to be focused on what we're doing to represent, you know, the people that elected us, and to be tuned in and plugged in. You know, I, like, you know, yesterday, there was a, there was a great workshop downtown for what, what's wanted, only forty people came.
So, so that's why, I guess why, I think what I'm hearing is that, you know, in terms of citizen engagement, for forty people to show up, well, there's, you know, a gazillion that didn't, and, and.
And, and so I think we can say, well, we're gonna have, you know, but, but I think we all represent and hear what people want. I mean, I think people want fair and equitable treatment, they want their, they want their interests first on our mind, and they want us to provide a service, I mean.
Right, but I guess the question, what I'm hearing you say is that there, that how do you know what is the level of service and the extent of expectations that the, that the citizens have out there? How do you get a handle on that?
I'm not trying to be contrary, contrary, but I mean, I feel like we had a very, very broad inclusive process about greenways. I mean, we went out there and talked to hundreds of people, people looked at maps, people talked, people, you know, the surveys, we did that, and we, we know that, you know? So, and, and what are we gonna do with that, that we went, we went out and asked, and we got back? And, and so, that, that's kind of the wrestling around that, I feel like that's, that's important. And, um, I'm not, I'm not, my point is not greenways. My point is not greenways, my point is a, a, a process that, you know, we, we acknowledge.
Any, any process that you have, if you go out and you talk about a greenway, you're gonna have a certain percentage of people come out. If you go out and talk about a racetrack, you're gonna have a certain amount of percentage of people. So then you got two items, then you talk about parks, then you wanna have a whole bunch of people come out.
And puppies and kittens.
And squirrels.
Puppies and kittens.
Right, but it, it goes back to the same thing. No matter what we put forward, if I put a racetrack forward, and I want one that's varied for it, and I say I'm gonna have a meeting, I'm gonna have a whole lot of people come to it. No different than the people that want me to, that comes back to the diversity. You got people that want the greenways, you got people that want racetracks, you got people still like to grow the back of it they can, you know? They sold the rights to the farms. So, you know, we can only do so much with so little.
And, and I think back to, what I'm, I agree with you, and I think that's what, what's, what I'm hearing is that if you gave folks choices, and they have to make choices, because you know there's just, you can't do everything, there's no way you can do everything, that you cannot please everyone. What kind of citizen driven data do you already have about priorities? Not, if I want to do this, oh, you know, is there any data like that?
Yes, I mean, that, that's, that's my whole point, is that as they started sharing different data, just from simply a request, wanting it, you know, where do we not have these services?
But I'm, I'm, I would love to know, I mean, if you know where citizen priority data is, I would love to see it. I mean, that, that where we've gone to the people, and they've had to make these decisions, I mean, I, I think that's a treasure trove.
But what, what they did was.
Do you have that manual?
Um, specific health and human services. We contracted a community listening and priorities that process every year, part of it's surveyed, part of it's focus groups, part of it's outreach populations, but it's specific health and human services. What do you do when you experience a crisis, and this, what do you go to for help? What do you do when you experience a crisis and this, who do you go to for help? Um, what's your, who, who are the, where do you turn in your community?
Which is great data.
That's kind of things, but not broad.
Or not prioritization.
Yeah, some of it's prioritization, but again, it's specific to help in human services.
Do we know how many people did a survey, survey about the crash?
Um, last count it was four hundred and seventy.
See, I love that stuff. I think that really is helpful a lot.
We have a survey online.
There's a survey.
But see, if the need, if the need is great, and, and, and really, y'all, y'all should see this. I mean, we're kind of talking about, you know, it's not anything that I just went and wanted for myself or anything like that. It's just something that I actually asked a question and then they provided the information, but they provided way more than what I asked for.
So you stated that you're talking about it, you only, and only you've seen it?
Who requested it?
I requested, I seen it.
Okay. Well, that to me speaks to what do you do about the information requests? That's another, that's another, that's the next conversation, but yeah. I'm being very sensitive.
Yeah, but the point, the whole point is, is that the data that was revealed showed a need. You know, and the need, to me, helps direct policy. Once you have agreement from the board.
But here's how I see it is different. Here's, yeah, here's how I see it is different. It was your idea to actually ask about the need. What I hear Holly suggesting is, how do we even know what the priority needs are if we are not tapping into some kind of systematic, um, data?
Okay, you're sure.
That's why I heard it's different.
That's, I'm not, I'm not, just so you know, I'm not.
Well, that's part. That's why we did what we did with trash, because there was a big issue of recycling. We went to community meetings, what people talked about most was trash. Did they not all, they all had an issue with trash. So we came up with a survey online about trash and we have four hundred and so much.
But, but that's already identifies the issue as trash is the most important thing. So I'm, I'm just trying to differentiate.
To four hundred people, yeah.
Yeah, it's going, yeah.
To four hundred people in return.
I think what they're saying is, it's kind of an open, open mic. What's on your mind and are we doing that? And I don't think we are.
Well, and the other thing too is that, um, you know, this goes to, the reason that I even had an interest in parks, one, is because of experience. Two, was everybody was telling me that they needed them. And the need was there and obviously constituents, you know, and traveling and going and seeing and visiting all the parks and going out there and talking to people and things, it just didn't happen. Hey, let's do this, you know, kind of thing. But then what was really cool, when you saw the data, it made you feel better about, you know, the thought process. And then it has to go from there and then the commissioners have to make this, you know, I'm not pitching anything, you know, just, I'm pitching data. Okay, you understand I'm pitching data.
Let me turn it back on. And I just want, I'm just gonna go there for, for a minute. And all I'm saying is, I just want, I just want, I want, I want that experience that you had to be equally recognized across districts. Cause I feel like, you know, that was a similar experience that I had in my little world with, with greenways. And because that might not be a part of this board, it kind of got leapfrogged over for something else. But, but what you're, what you're talking about is the exact, is my exact same experience. So, and, and mine's not better than yours and yours is not better than mine. It's, it's just like, how do we, how do we reconcile the two with limited resources, with very diverse? I don't know, I, I, but I do think it's a real challenge. And I think that unless we kind of recognize that we all have, we all have those conversations. We are all talking to those people and we all have different things that are, that are coming forward and we value and we celebrate each other's and find a way to go forward. Um, so, and not, and not, you know, put one on top of the other, so.
Let me, there are two things here. One of them is maybe Kathy, when we did, this is before this board's experience, but we used to do community meetings several times a year. And my recollection was, the first ones we did, we had huge crowds and then every time it was less and less, to the point that we stopped doing them because we'd have thirty or forty people at most.
Oh, that would have been a good one. If we had thirty or forty people show up, that would have been a good one. We had maybe one or two at some of them there near the end that would show up.
Yeah, and if we, we start off, it was a big deal each year. It seemed like you did them yearly or what was your?
We started, we did them, uh, twice a year and then we went to once a year. And then we did every other year and then we got rid.
Okay, so that's, that's one thing we've done before. My question turned back to you would be, what are the best practices? Because, you know, is there, is there some, I mean, that's one way to do it. Go out and say, tell me, open mic, tell me what's on your mind. Another way is say, survey, here's your tax bill, tell me what's on your mind. Uh, cause I think, I think Holly's got a really good point that, you know, just open, not, not suggest, tell me if you like greenways. Tell me if you like dogs, you know, I mean, sometimes you have to be careful how you word it or even just by bringing up the subject, you're saying this is important. So how do other communities that you're familiar with get the freelance, hey, you know, sometimes we've been eating nothing. I don't like going to meetings, I don't like to email you. I'm kind of a silent majority. How do I, how can we get that information?
I think the best answer is, it's gonna have to, it's gonna be a variety of ways to do that. Whether it's a citizen survey, whether it's a combination of that, it's focus groups, whether it involves, right, you know, involves, um, another thing, I just forgot what it was, but I think that you're gonna have to use a variety. And again, I'm partly, she raised the question and then this was something she wanted greater clarity. I frankly feel you all seem to be a bit struggling in terms of sort of figuring out kind of where is your direction at this point. Um, and that's not been the major discussion point here. I put up some slides around strategic planning because that will force you all to think about, or what, what is it you wanna focus on? Sorry, I lost my focus.
I guess is there a high functioning county or city that you work with? Say, well, here's what they do.
They're gonna use a variety of methods.
Okay.
They're gonna use a variety of methods and, and, and everything like that is gonna be, can I be specific? Well, like a telephone survey, like, like a mail survey.
So it's been taxpayer money to have someone do a telephone survey?
Well, but, but the intention is to be able to engage citizens.
Yes, citizens engage and rather.
No, I'm getting, I, I, I understand what you said. I just wanted to clarify, I'm clarifying what you, what you said.
So, okay, um, there, there are a variety of ways to do it and some can be as sophisticated as, as you want. Some can be very kind of low tech. But, but all of them are intentional in some way, put it that way. And, you know, one of the things that I think is a benefit of that is that it outlasts anybody's election. Um, I was working with a very small town and they had a pretty elaborate outreach effort to make sure that they were getting not just the usual suspects, but the unusual suspects in their thinking. And a curmudgeonly person said, you know what? The best thing about this is, is if we are really reflective of whatever the community's vision is, it will outlast our elections.
Yes.
And so that is one of the values. That and quite frankly, engaging and educating citizens is a byproduct. So in work that I've done just recently, you know, they wanted to make sure that they're getting the input, but what they hadn't really thought about was how educated folks are gonna be, how interested people are in things like trash or whatever it is, that they were building community as well as anything else. So that's a tremendous outcome, I think, of citizen engagement beyond figuring out what priorities are.
And that would be the ultimate more we, unless I, if we, if we were really open to hearing and, and letting them bubble up from, from, not, not just that, it's gotta be a both and, but I really, that it outlasts any of us is, that's, that's the fifteen years. That's the fifteen years. Cause Mike talked about pushing up bases in the future. I mean, we're, we're all gonna be doing that or all gonna, you know, so that, and this is a very, we're very short-lived at this, this point.
Did any of, I mean, mine's going to an annual survey that has specific information, specific questions that you would ask. I, I mean, I, I see a lot of value in that couple, people would take it at home, you know, and be written in, it'd be very simple and, you know, and it had, you know, and you could keep that and, and that'd just be great information.
And, and some places will do like, they, they might do every other year and they let a citizen survey and then other kinds of input. You know, it's all, they, they have a variety and they use it in different ways. Um, but yeah, there are places that then feed into their performance measures of well-being around the community. Yes, sir.
It goes back before I ever got into this and this type of kind of city, I went to a couple of events to see what was going on there and we brought the money as the parking rent person. They had a van over West Satchel under the library over there and all the steepes had it. Well, all the sheets you got up there, they had to roll on the sheets. And by the time they got the, right, and we had about twenty-five hanging on the wall. And this is just for one park. Oh, yeah. And I said, you cannot plant larders, weeds, bushes, tomatoes and everything in a baseball field and maintain it as a baseball field, but they wanted to. And everybody has their own ideas and that's, you know, I kept looking at it and I says, just how much can that put in one?
So I will say, you know, be careful what you ask for. So if you're, if you're gonna ask for citizen input, you need to be clear on what you're gonna do with that data, how it gets mixed in with everything else, because quite frankly, one of the other things that happens is, general public these days, they don't understand what a county function is versus a, a city function. They don't have enough information and you all are in a position to be able to make decisions about complicated technical issues that we've already figured out is a lot to know and many people aren't. So it's, you have to be cautious about that and back to your point about the cost, everything's a trade-off. So it's not, again, not a right or wrong answer, but everything's a trade-off. So, you know, those will take a lot of time and effort and they could be costly. What else do you get by doing that? So add all that to your thinking.
And one of the things, um, like Code for America, this is what they do. They send brigades and volunteers to communities and this is the kind of stuff they do. And, and it's fascinating that the data they come up with and they do it in a way that's totally innocuous and, um, they know how to do it. So like Mike is saying, they don't ask the question, well, what do you wanna plant in the baseball field? They would say, do you want a baseball field? So, I mean, there's places out there that do.
Well, it's that same thing. That, that, that is a park, the way I look at it. That's one of the parks of the city or, or whatever and it's, it's useful. And my thinking always has been, you know, if they, if the people want to do this in an area, that's great. But don't expect somebody to do it for them, take it over. We have parks that we take care of, Forest County. We have parks that we own and we don't take care of that are part of the public, that, you know, the, the public takes care of. So, you know, you gotta look at the partnership sides of it too, to, to see how you wanna make it work. All these people there wanting all these things, but when they get down there wanting to do them, how can they? They can either have a ball field or they can start a garden.
The one thing that could potentially be good about the CRA is that because there's gonna be this, there are these two clumps of things, right? We, you could just really look at the world of, uh, CRA and do that as a survey because that really will be the choices within that. And they don't have to, trash doesn't have to compete with, uh, parks, you know, and then, so that's actually better in some ways. And then maybe if it's something like this every year, we did one year, we would kind of do the check-in about the parks and rec and then the culture and then next we would think about core services and how we kind of go forward with that. Anyway, I don't know, but, but it could be a real opportunity, particularly with the new institute.
A really simplistic way to look at some of our initial needs, when we went out to all the communities and I think we went to just about every fire station and we did it when we went to. But the interesting thing that came out, we went out just, just to hear. And what we heard, the first thing we had to look at, well, what are the other resources that, that are in the community to take care of? Well, our big question's fifty percent more around roads. So it's really easy then to tap the resources next and it starts to fall out with, what do we need to do or how do we add value to what they're doing? So I do think sometimes if, if this happened that way without getting so focused on just one, one little piece, but, but I have to say, we kind of fell into that one. I don't think we went with that, the plan of that being the process. I think that was the outcome of it because we really did narrow it down.
We had D and T at every meeting, this we got.
Outways we don't own now.
But then we had our questions and, so, but it is like, if you go back through this, like, here's the questions that they're having. Here's, and people, here's the other resources and here's what we can do to, you know, to bring added value to it.
Well, this is, this is sort of off topic, but not really. I mean, it's sort of central to some of the things we're talking about. The last point that you all made about kind of, um, you know, uh, data to your point here that elevate the issue to the public, that is definitely one of the roles that you all play. And this notion about setting goals that allow others to understand, you know, the targets and how they can support. Again, this is back to what the goal that you all play. So this is interesting conversation. I don't know if this is something you wanna pursue, but it's, it certainly was something that you wanted greater clarity on. It certainly would help, um, it would, it would play to your strengths here and it would help you all think about kind of what are the strategic priorities? And quite frankly, um, you all have talked an awful lot about politics and districts, more so today than I ever hear in retreats. If there was a way to elevate your issues to a higher level, that might be another reason to think about the citizen engagement piece.
And I'll just throw this out before you go on. You know, we do the sustainability plan and all of your departments work on it. One of yours, a scavenging body that I put together is a piece to do a citizens one-on-one. That, the goal of that was to get you better board and commission appointees, but it's also educating the public. Now, that's a five-year goal. And I'll just tell you, I don't have the resources and manpower to do it right now. But if that's something that you guys feel is important, maybe we could raise that one up, bring it forward. Because it really is what you need. It would be hard to get good opinions out of citizens who don't understand what can be done. Think of how hard it was for you guys to understand how long it took you, that learning curve. Well, to, to go out and survey citizens who don't really understand what it takes, you're gonna get them asking for pardon in a, you know, in the middle of the ball field because they don't have any gun. And, and you're gonna get more commission numbers who are like that. When you start pulling people whose names you don't recognize, and I know that's what you want. You want a bigger field of people who are engaged. So that's one of the things that we really wanna do. Now, that takes, it takes a lot of work, but that is one way to get a better educated and then a group of people you can survey for information too, so. And other counties have done that and they're very successful at it. So that is on your sustainability plan in the next five years to do that.
It's like a citizen academy, huh? It's like a citizen academy, yes.
And I think too, when, um, when things are going well for people, we don't hear. We hear when there's a problem and, um, you know. So, you know, do you tap into, do you know why are things going well for you or do you just switch to the?
Yeah, I think that's important. But is it you, what's going down?
If you, unless you do a systematic approach, you're not gonna have a complete set of data.
Right.
Well, I don't know if there's, um, a way to wrap this conversation up or if there's a decision in this conversation I'm struggling with right now is, do you need to make a decision or is it just a mood or thought?
I, I think we're probably the point, maybe we should ask Kathy and Warren to, to work on a proposed survey. I, I think a survey is something that we should do with our tax bill. And then make other suggestions, the academy, I know the police chief has one, I think the sheriff has one, maybe, to give options and then let's bring it up to a meeting and maybe discuss it further. Does that, do you look at everybody?
I think that's great.
I did like that idea of mixing, I mean, cause I think we're always gonna get people that will go the extra mile that they're, that either to fill out something or to respond. So figuring out a way that we go, we meet them where they're at, their inbox or their email or if it's their, you know, their phone or whatever it is, that try to, try to go to them in addition to this other richer qualitative stuff that we would get.
Great, good discussion. Um, I hope that was helpful. He's still with us?
I'm still with him.
Yeah? What, you didn't have much to say about this particular conversation? Fair enough. I would like to switch to the, to the question that I asked you all to consider. I'm, I'm gonna probably not go over. I'm gonna probably not go over this right now. Yeah, let me just back up. So, um, this is, this is actually a cycle of communications, yes. I didn't, I thought I wasn't gonna use that word, but, but this is, I think it's very helpful to, as a framework for thinking about. And the reason I asked the question about who else has seen this, okay? When we have fewer opportunities to share information, we have sort of wider gaps of understanding and knowledge about things, which might lead me to say, well, I don't know how they do things. I don't know why he does that. I don't really wanna work with them anymore. And I don't, then I don't know anything about working with Joe. And then I say, well, I'm never gonna have an opportunity to share. So it's a sort of a vicious cycle that can go down. And the reason I ask the question is, why do you know something that the rest of the folks don't know? Might not be causing a problem now, but it could, it could. And so even how information gets shared is really critical, potentially critical thing to get, I'm just shared understanding about. But it's, you know, the good news is that you can actually change that cycle, probably at any particular point, by providing more opportunities to share this kind of conversation. Sharing your viewpoints about things puts better and more accurate information in the room. Oh, now I understand. And I'm beginning to develop that trust. We might work more together, the more we work together, the more opportunities there is for that spiral to go upwards and develop that level of trust. So this is sort of a simple little wheel to kind of think about putting more frequent and accurate communication and data in the room to be able to build, to build trust. And that's another reason to have the next sets of conversations about, you know, what it is that you, how you view these things. So, question I want you to, to consider is this. Where is it hanging out at? The grocery store, downtown local brewery, the high school football game, any of those places that you hear people gathering and you hear people saying things about you all as commissioners and how you actually do your work? So what is it that you would like to have them say about you?
Trust and have confidence in.
Trust. So trust to do?
But even if we don't agree, they're trying to do the right thing. We trust, we trust their judgment, even though it's not my judgment.
They're effective.
They're effective? Effective at what?
Ensuring a good quality of life.
So how will you know these things? Well, let's keep going, we're gonna go back to it.
To take action when they need to.
When they need to?
When it's necessary.
And money wisely.
Good stewardess.
Is this, um, is being good steward, do you define it differently than spending money wisely?
Well, you could, I mean, it's a pretty big, it's a pretty dark term. When I say that, I mean, of dollars and assets, when I say that.
What else do you want to say?
No, we're empathetic.
Empathetic? What's whom?
The citizens.
All citizens? And by empathy, what do you mean?
Um, we can see someone and walk in their shoes.
What else? About how you make decisions, for instance?
Thoughtful. Deliberate.
Thoughtful and deliberate. To each other or to citizens?
To the citizens. I don't care what the citizens are.
They don't?
No, I think they do.
And they do the same stuff, but they really care what we listen to.
What if they're commenting specifically about how you all do your work?
We need to have some integrity in that, that's all.
So this is a great word. What does integrity mean to you?
Integrity to me is, we have to work for seven, they, so. Intelligence goes in integrity, in my eyes, which are not very smart. But if we can put integrity into what we do, we're not always gonna agree. The people understand what's right, so that brings integrity to us.
Okay, so you say it's around effort?
Maybe I'm wrong, but that's the way I feel.
Well, and how do others define integrity?
Work well together.
Pardon me?
Work well, that may be a little bit off, but work well together, you know, that one you said.
Honorable. Honorable. Say more about that.
Um, I guess it's selfish to have everything as, um, you know, all my granddaughters think, um, you know, what do you do when you're in the shadows? When nobody's watching? And, um, you know, this is for the right intentions and, um, sort of the best is what's for most people.
So how, how would it reflect? Are you acting with the best intentions? Other thoughts about the word?
What you see is what you get.
So for me, this word was really instrumental at one point in my life in terms of, am I actually behaving? Are my behaviors reflecting on what I'm saying to you about the way I wanna be? Are we in alignment? And so that, that was a, it's a, that's why I love word, it's hard. It's always harder to see when you're actually not doing the things you said. It's a lot easier when you are open to asking other people, help me if I'm really not living up to what I said I wanna do. And for me, for me personally, I have to be open to hearing that.
Respectful of each other and the public.
Sure he's talking about you.
That's okay.
So, um, this is another good word, of each other and the public. Uh, so, listen to me, I'm so old kids today. It's that, don't disrespect me. And it's a really, it's like, well, what does that mean? Showing respect, what does this mean when you say respect? How do you perceive that?
Well, respect for each other means listening to each other and accepting their views even as different as valid. That we're not smarter than they, anybody else. We just happen to be sitting in this seat at this point in time and we're regular people, but we have to make the calls. Respectful of the public is, we listen to what they have to say. We, we take it under advisement and try to respond to concerns. We may not do it on the spot, but we certainly hear them.
Does that really have to do with what they think?
I think we have to process what they think, yes. Do we have to do what they think? I think we have to give consideration, yes. Or else we shouldn't do public comment. What's the point if you're not gonna pay attention to what they say?
Can I ask a question? Because sometimes in the business that we're in, the answer is no. Not because we may have to answer it, because that's what the statutes say or that's what. So when you have to do that, I guess I wonder what you wanna, what you wanna hear them say when you've had to say no.
I think that's where the empathy part comes in, um, when you have to say no. And I, and I know no is a complete word, but once you think like ninety-five percent of the time, you can give, direct someone or give something, a glimmer of hope or where they're being heard. You know, yeah.
Most people just feel like they have some kind of value.
Yes. We don't know that respectful is.
The worst thing you can do to me is to ignore me.
Yes.
Tell me yes, tell me no, but don't ignore me, because then you're telling me I'm not even worthy of your attention.
And being honest, um, you know, you can not agree with someone and don't turn around the issue, just have to tell them, I'm not bad.
Holly, you have a second?
Um, I think part of, this is a little bit of a nuance around respect, but I think part of really practicing respect is being open to however someone presents themselves and not stereotype them because of, oh, there comes Jerry again, I know what Jerry's gonna say. Or, you know, pick on you, Jerry. But, but we do that to each other and sometimes we hear words and we think we know what they mean when they really mean something completely different. So I think part of respect is having that openness of heart each day and anew and, and listening, working hard to listen and not just, not just hey, there's that type of that person, I know what they're gonna say. And I will say it was more challenging on city council because, um, we had more of a cast of characters. And, but I worked really hard, Mike was one of them. But I worked really hard to listen to Mike and he had different things. I mean, sometimes it was annexation, sometimes it was about the buses and sometimes, sometimes it was about nonpartisan thing. And I didn't assume that I, I hadn't worked at it, hadn't really worked. But, but I didn't assume that I knew where he was going, because in a lot of times I could have guessed. But sometimes he would trick me and he would go a different way. And I'm like, well, you didn't see that one coming. I think that's really being respectful of, of human beings and the complexity that we are. And I'd like to see us all do that more, with each other, with staff, with, um, with the public.
No, no prejudging is one of the reasons that I've written this.
Yeah, no prejud, but to put it in the positive, yeah, prejudging I think really helps us understand what part of it. But I think that's what I wanna do is crack open the word open and try to, try to kind of let some of the stuff that we carry around go away.
So I don't.
I think a lot along the lines of that in commissioner committees in particular, that, you know, you're respectful of that person's position. And they were elected to, to, to present, to have conversations and to say things and bring up things and have, have more conversations and air out things. And they have, because they say that or they bring that up, you know, you should be respectful of that. We should, you know, that's what they're supposed to do. We should be okay with that. Okay with the I W O, and I agree with everything, but okay with the I W O. It goes back to what we're doing here. We've done more here in the last four hours in talking to each other than we have in the last eight months, to be honest. Each time we learn more about each other. And when we first went to the class, we worked and just become commissioners now that we are, and then learning curves down home. But the, the respect of each other is very important. But I think that somehow we need to do this, pick for the name probably every six months.
And I have to say, I don't quite agree with what Mike's saying.
I don't want to go through.
I feel like, um, the three of us in particular have gone really out of our, and I don't know whether it was a conscious thing, but we've just ended up spending a lot of time together. And although, you know, Joe and I are a great example, I mean, you know, we probably cancel each other out on ninety-nine percent of the stuff. But because we've spent so much time together and we listen to each other, you know, we, we trust each other and we may not agree, but we know that we're not gonna pull the rug up or go crazy when I don't agree or, you know. And I think that's really valuable, but we did carve out ways to seek each other out.
And what I hear you say is that this time together has been very valuable for you to have a greater level of understanding. So you all may have had that, that's great. I'm jealous of that time.
Yeah, I know, but I feel like Mike and I have that. But I think we've worked towards it. And David and Holly, I've been friends for a long time, so, you know, we didn't go through all that, but, you know, I didn't know.
Well, we want, we want to, you know, I've talked to Holly more probably in the last two months. Then we talk from the time that I've been here, stopped off around that. But Ellen's always been good, always been good, Tyler and David's good, Tyler, you know. Because it goes back to the same thing. Have to have guys, whether it's Wanda or Randy or Donna or David or Kathy. She's a good guy, I have to say that for her. She will keep us straight when we screw up and we do that quite frequently.
Since eighty-three?
Yes. That's amazing.
Especially us.
It is amazing and it is a huge job. I, I don't mean just you all, in general. The role of a clerk is often underappreciated and under valued and is huge. You'd be in a mess of trouble. So I'm gonna go back to this question about thoughtful and deliberate decision making. What does that mean to you all and how will it be evident to people in your behaviors that you're doing that?
And how you talk to each other, I mean, you know, if you're in a, if you're in a meeting, you know, and, uh, just the worst way it should be, discuss things the way it should be, you don't personalize them.
You mean for the respect piece? Yeah, um, okay. And what? Oh, well, thoughtful and deliberate in your decision making, I'm thinking specifically around decision.
I think those are great qualities to have in thoughtful and deliberate decision making. But I think it means coming to the table with, again, with an open mind and not, you know, already locked into a position. I mean, obviously, we're all gonna be predisposed to certain things, but, you know, being open to the people on the other side of the table, being the candidates or whatever, and I think that is thoughtful and deliberate, um, decision making. In my, you know, humble estimation.
And I think to Mike's point too, thoughtful and deliberate takes time, conversation. And, you know, allowing that to occur, that's what's going on here is on schedule. We're gonna be here, you're guiding the conversation, so we're, we're all gonna discuss things, you know. In the commissioners meeting, sometimes you can allow a conversation maybe to, more to occur and then, it might, if I, if I'm able to speak more, she's able to speak more. My, my degree would be more thoughtful or more deliberate in the decision making.
So what I've written down, and then I'm gonna ask another question, I'll make sure this is reflective of what you said. I can read it. Open, come with an open mind and then go in and change your mind and be influenced by the work of others, by opinions of others. That, that's what I heard you say.
I think that's good, but I think if you do your homework, a lot of times you do make your mind up. I'm just gonna lay it out there. Most of the time I've made my mind up. And it's not that I'm not listening to the public, I have changed my mind before. But I think part of being a commissioner is you gotta do your homework. And you can talk to the other commissioners if it's something of particular interest to you. And you can't go in there and just shoot from the hip. That is disaster, in my opinion. I've seen it in some boards, I've been on boards, that happened. It seems like when people are blindsided, the worst possible decisions are made and hard feelings are created. And so I think if there is, there's a, there's a balance there that you want to hit. And I'm not sure exactly where it is, I didn't, I don't know if I hit it all the time, but I'm not gonna sit here and say I, I totally have no idea what I'm gonna do. I have probably fifty to eighty percent probability of what I'm gonna do when I walk in there, because I've done my homework.
I think that's where we need to get to make sure that we all are somehow communicating. Some, some people like to communicate by email. That works well for them. I don't put anything in writing that I can ever be hung on me. So if you get something written, it's very to the point. That's it. But I'm also verbal as opposed to graphic. I'd much rather verbalize my thoughts.
I've heard this expressed this way sometimes when a, a mayor in particular, she was in new, is a new position for her and she said, they had lots of conversations about the expectations, the processes for notification, for this, how to handle press, all of that. And finally, in the end, she said, please just assume the best intentions. I have the best intentions. I have the best intentions at heart and I'm not always going to do the right thing. I'm sometimes going to make a mistake. And if you could at least go in with the assumption that I did it honestly, without, you know, malice, then we can at least backtrack when we need to and discuss that. But, you know, maybe that's just an out, it was just an outright request, which was great. You want to say that now too?
And to go, and to go further down that road, it goes to the thing I mentioned at the beginning, is at what point when you commit to other people and we want to help each other, oh, well, you've told these people that we will do this or implied, maybe didn't tell them we would do it, but kind of left the message and then we find out later, oh, you've kind of committed us. I want to help you, but I don't think that's a good thing. You know, and then we're, then we're in a real quandary. So I think there, there are two, there's two bad things about that. One of them is just working and not letting people know, which may be okay because it may never happen. And nobody wants things that aren't going to happen to be brought to the front burner and then just, that's just another thing on the pile. But the commitment part is another, is next step, I think, where you kind of say, oh, I can get this done, or I believe we can do this.
Well, the truth of the matter is, you can't individually make that kind of commitment because you can't do it by yourself.
I, I think what Chairman is saying is a very good point too, is, is I try to say, I don't speak to the board, but, but we say it so much and we intuitively understand it. And he's right, sometimes maybe we forget to convey that. I, I think I probably have on some things that, you know, we'll, we'll work on this. We'll see what we can get done. We'll, you know, I understand what that means. We, you know, we'll take the board. But if I, but it's really easy to forget to verbalize that to someone else.
And, and so that's back to this, you know, frankly, the general public doesn't necessarily understand how things get done, or, you know, much less what's in the purview of this jurisdiction versus another. So reminding yourselves that it does take action by the whole board.
Oh, I think we get that.
We get it, it's we forget to say it.
That's what I'm saying, is being more intentional about bringing that to the forefront for others' benefits.
And then the other side, going further down the other side of the road, is when, and Wanda, Wanda and I have talked about this a lot, where I hear one of the commissioners tell me something, I say, they're going to do this. And then they don't. They, they didn't say that and they told you, I'm not going to do this. I heard, because I want it so bad, I'm gonna. And that's gone on since I've been on the commission. We've had an ongoing conversation about that one.
We really have. And nonverbal expressions, and that we've not talked about this a lot. Sometimes the nonverbal is so loud you didn't hear the words.
Right.
And, and I do think that happens. One of the things, in my early twenties, I used to frustrate the crap out of myself some years ago, because I would get so excited about something, undo this research, I can have my information together, and I just was close, ready to go. And I just assumed that what I'd spent a month doing, somebody else could be just as excited as I was in 15 minutes. And I, I watch and we, we do, we do some of that because of the interest level will be different for different projects. And that enjoyed them and they kind of focused on one out in the camera area. And so we're probably a little bit ahead of explaining it. And you can get in there and it's like, well, wait a minute, we didn't stop and go to the beginning and bring the board. We, we started with our excitement. Because I think that still happens in, in the, in the way we build our relationships with one another. And we're still dealing with this. I think we're kind of like curve. And I still catch myself doing that too. It's like, oh, I know now so much.
And, and it's also like, you know, you, any of us can come up with what we think is the greatest idea in the world. And then when it falls on deaf ears, you can't take it personally. You have to just reboot. But not taking it personally because it doesn't go the way we want it to go is very important.
Well, there's, there's some reason why we really, really wanted to do this. And all, that switch is not going to get cut off. You know, we're still going to go full steam ahead. You know, when we hear something, oh, yeah, that's exactly what we're doing. And we're still going to go full steam ahead for that. We just have to learn the communication part of it and, you know, oh dang, you know, you got to get four people, you know, and then, you know, and, you know, and, you know, when you, when it to everybody, how do you do that? It's, that's not easy, but it doesn't slow down the enthusiasm, whether it's to me, or to colleague, or to Mike Carr, whoever, doesn't slow down that enthusiasm and nor will it ever, because that's the one we're wired. We just got to remember how to navigate through all of this.
If somebody pulls me back from the break, I'm going to slow down. We had a meeting recently, there was an issue that came up. And Commissioner Jones brought a point, and I went back and asked, she and Commissioner Doeman both, and I was glad for the, for the question, because I went back to the, to the source of this and found out that what, the point you made was a good point.
And there's wisdom and, and I don't think you ever concede just to know and, and you just back up so you can reapproach because, you know, there's a lot of wisdom in that, but it's hard to grab that.
Well, I rely on the conversations with you and David on the experience regarding and stuff like that. Well, you might be a little too far ahead. You know, you might want to, you know, turn down, you might want to better, but, you know, that's, and I appreciate that. You're still going to be, you know, excited about what you want to try to accomplish.
One of the things that you all said that usually gets up on this list is that, oh no.
On the staff support list. I get that all the time.
No, it was, no, no, I'm sorry. On this list, it was, oh, that you, that you, you take a vote, you take, you on a decision, and then you move to the next one. Because that has, that really can trip groups up too, when, like, you know, I'm still mad about three votes ago. And, and it, and it really does influence and color you. So, you know, being able to kind of leave that vote there and move to the next issue, have that conversation, leave that vote there and move to the next issue. So if you all do feel that you do that, you're, that's a great thing. Because I've seen that trip, trip other votes. I got to bring this thing up from 15 months ago because I'm still mad about it. So that's, that's good. I do want to spend, is there anything else that you definitely want to make sure gets on that list? Because I do want to make sure that we give feedback to staff about kind of what's working well.
Will we take it back to the board?
If it's fast. Five minutes. Yeah.
Somebody else has got to go and feel a little embarrassed.
Less than 30 minutes ought to make sure that we get refreshed.
Okay.
So, in, in the interest of making sure that we've got the right question, I actually just tweaked this, because it's not just staff is interested in hearing if they're supporting you in, in the right, in quite the way that you'd like. What's working well, what you might need to do differently, or where, where can you strengthen your support? But I think that it is really the, the working relationship together. In other words, Ellen had a question about something in the ways that they, the board approaches staff. So it's kind of a two-way street. Although I clearly heard wanting some feedback for the staff about, are you getting what you need? So.
That's hard said.
Pardon me?
That's hard said.
So what, what is the staff doing that's working really well in terms of providing support for you all?
I think they are, they are remarkably quick to return communications via phone or email.
They are successful.
Do I what?
They are successful.
What I would wonder about that too though, is that, you know, if they, I think they, I think they prioritize that, which I think they should, but it's, I think it's imperative on us to not take advantage of it. And so like, I mean, I really appreciate getting my colleagues returned back quickly. I know everyone on this board does the same thing. But I, I was just thinking, like, if people are calling her all day long, you know, and she's, and she has that rapid response all the time, that's a lot. I mean, and so, anyway, I'm not sure what you do with that in terms of a working model, but, because I, because I do think that that's, I think that's actually part of the professionalism and the, and the trust factor is getting that quick response. But I think it's imperative on me not to abuse that. So, but I think like, you know, like when I, I don't call a lot. When I call, you know, I really have something going on, so.
Well, if we all call her once a day, that's, and we talk to her 10 minutes.
It's a lot.
Every day.
Yeah. I mean, it, it doesn't take much because there's seven of us, so.
And rarely in those conversations is it, I remember when the, when the phone gets hung up, there's usually work to do.
Yeah.
I think during the process, and then I probably overdone myself, Wanda, and then. But I, it goes back to the same thing. We're in the learning process. As, as it goes along, she won't have to tolerate me as much. I just have a lot of questions. They give me hollering and getting answers back, they'd really, really do good to me. And I can't complain. And, you know, as, as next year comes in and I learn more about it, I'm like, I'm not that good. You know, it won't be 10 minutes a day, it'll be hopefully 10 minutes a week, she'll be good.
I mean, I just pose that as an idea, is like, I mean, obviously, all bets are off if something's hot, you know, but just as a, as a general operating principle, probably checking in once a week seems to me an appropriate amount to check in with the county manager. Is that too much or too little, or what?
Well, I mean, I think once a week in some cases is too, is a little bit too little, but.
You're not going to cheer. It's a different situation.
And he and I probably have less time now than we've had in, in the past. But I guess I'd say this way, if it's an issue, we want to be right there. If it's a conversation, for sake of conversation, it'd be nice if those were a little less often. But, but if you got an issue, we need to get it addressed right there. It's just going to, it's going to damage y'all until we get an answer.
What about, you, you, any staff person's office, make an appointment, call first, what's the best, what's the best way for everybody to work with that?
I'm, I'm not easy to find there all the time, so you're trying to save yourself a lot of steps. But I think that's true of all of us that was around and down everywhere. But we will take a couple. David and I have a, a great deal. He needs me right there. He leaves me a voicemail. If I say I missed a call, I know that here I want to get back to one another.
And I told Miss Wanda, accounting business comes first.
So, I mean, we all have different ways of handling third up and down. But I do think if you've got immediate issues, that's all we're here for, is to address the immediate issues and to get right on it for you.
And I try to text or to see, to make sure that she is not busy, or I am to discover merit to see if her time aligns with mine or not. It's cool.
And there's a text. What do you prefer?
Uh, text, I, I really like it anymore and more. The emails are fine, but the texts is, they tend to be short and sweet and get to the.
Yeah.
So is the text to set up a time to talk, or to get a yes or no answer, or?
It's, it's a yes or no answer, or are you available, or whatever those are really good, or could you call me when you can? Those work for me. I don't know about the rest. There's a lot more staff there.
So, so in the order of, I had appointment, call, or text. So we clarified a little bit of what a text is for. Something short and sweet, set it up, yes or no. Call, if it's hot issue?
Absolutely.
Appointments, if it's a regular kind of conversation?
Just got a list. When I always say, we say, well, you know, if you, you know, do you have a list today? And we actually have a regular meeting because I schedule time with several of you. And it's, we come with our list.
Well, Wanda will do that, but that's if she has something that's out there that she has to ask about. She's, yes. Say, do you have time next week? You know, for a little bit? We'll just turn. Right.
And sometimes when she does ask for information, I'm not sitting in the back. I'll call. I'm just very careful about what I put right.
But I, I would just like everybody to kind of just think through, and you, you're, everybody could come up with a completely different answer, and that's cool too. But if, if, if Wanda is managing this, you know, multimillion dollar business with X number employees, you know, in the four digits, or we're in the four digits now, right? So, I mean, do we need the daily, do we need to touch her daily? I mean, I would say no. I mean, I, but I think that's an internal question, but that's a check I think we could, we can all assess. And.
Who goes back?
Not that you don't love us, not that you're not there. I mean, we're not, this, this has come from us. You're not, you're not giving that out.
But we go back, same thing, ended when, when you were first.
Well, that's.
From the city. You probably went to the city manager more than you should have.
That was their story. I thought you were a pretty independent operator.
What other feedback do you want to give staff or staff to give to the board about your working relationship, things that are going particularly well?
If they anticipate problems, then try to let us know ahead of time. This, this could be an issue and you need to be aware. Here's some information you need.
I think that's a good job to do.
I think all staff does that very well. It takes particularly Mandy and Wanda sending a lot out, saying this is, especially with social service, sometimes using confidential so we can't. But we'll get an email. See, we get an email. All seven of us get the email. And seven of us, we could reply, maybe that's the way it should be. But I think we had talked about having one of the staff reply and copy all of it, so the person that sent it says, oh, they're all interested in my answer. So I think that's kind of where we come down, isn't it?
And often we get to those faster than you. I mean, this is our job, so, and y'all have other jobs, so we can get to those and have an answer. Pretty much about time to get them out.
And I think not to meddle where we don't belong is pretty important.
Could you be specific?
I, I don't mean it in topic, but what's an example of metal, an example of where you don't belong?
Interfering with an issue that by us as commissioners could possibly influence or change an outcome, but it's not fair to do that.
An outcome of?
Okay, you know, to be general, back to that dog I was talking to you about, to meddle and say what's going to happen, where's it going to go, instead of trusting the process that.
So, I, I, this is my colored hooded things I give in notes that I produce. So what's working well for the board is trust, trust staff to work the process to resolve.
Right. It's not for us to meddle and interfere with that.
I'll take that as an example. I often know of the emails that really, in Mandy's department, they can't share the details, but she's quick to give you as much information as she can. That is, so that you can, and I know you're all always confident, but she is delicate at that point.
That's.
I know that don't handle it, so I don't worry about it.
Well, I think those are also areas where you don't have local authority. And I try to give you that out on many fronts, because the chances of going to make somebody happy, 50/50, on a good day.
Somebody giving some money to an entity, I say, you're right, we have no local authority.
And that's what I try to say to people, that pass on your concern.
Say I did.
I think, I think in a more general term is it's, don't interfere with the chain of command. Don't.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Other feedback you all want to offer on the working relationship, state of working relationship?
I think the other thing that's been good to see, or that's been my experience, I think it's almost because we've all, almost, almost everybody's kind of started at the same starting place, is that there doesn't, there doesn't appear to be any preference. And, and I think, even though I think you've always been very fair, I think even the appearance that there might be, you know, more buddy buddy with this person, a buddy buddy with that person, that, I think that's tricky, I think it's very tricky, particularly if you ever have those moments where you're, you know, you don't, you don't know what exactly is going on, and then you go to your bad place, right? And so I think that kind of, that professional relationship, I think it's good for, good for everybody.
It's very tough when it's not that way. I mean, I'll put you in real.
Sure, if you're in the office space, so. So for us to respect that, that, that on her end too, it's a good.
So I put in a, a treatment of the board by the staff and the management. Other, I'm going to put to the staff, you all asked for clarity. You said, you said, where, where is? Are we provided what we need to support the board? Are there specific questions that you want to ask?
I think they are. I think they provide whatever we ask. And they provide actually for you to mull it to us. And in good times, so that we have an idea of what we're.
You get it far enough in advance, so you've got a chance to mull it, read it, do your homework?
Because this is some stuff that, you know, they'll put it on an agenda and we'll look at it and not tell us it's coming and relax it, which is what we're looking for. So that's, I think that's a, that's true. We always have a little option there.
Everybody feel on the board perspective, you know how to get something on the agenda, and you're comfortable with that process? Sometimes that's a stickler point.
We have a standing rule. If, uh, they're surprised, I bet they're shocked. It works, you know, inside the organization, there's a lot of doubt on the way you set it up. And we try to, we try to.
Were you asking them if they have stuff to tell us about you?
Now, I'm asking them if they actually still are seeking query on any of the things that. And yes, I guess the other as well.
You know, it's, everybody's different. So I, I think the correspondence, the, the relationship, some is by phone, some it's, it's email, some it's, and I, I do think, and sometimes actually Frankie will tell you, I worry about the staff too, because you'll see emails come to you from any of, it's 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, and I sit back and I think, you know, I worry, maybe getting these late, not getting these late. I mean, because those are the things I worry a little bit about, because a decent person, we try to make real responses. So if, if you get an answer 2:00 in the morning, make sure you're front of the line on a ding, or it doesn't make, if you ask a question, you get that answer anytime. And we're trying to, to change that habit a little bit so that we're, we're fresh when we get to work too.
That's what you use the do not disturb in settings.
Can I just say, if I send an email at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, please don't feel required. I mean, because I, I would, I do do that.
I, I do too.
So, but I don't, I do not expect an immediate answer.
But now, I'm still, if God responds, it's probably these five seconds. Well, that's not what I meant.
And that's actually a really good clarification. I know that in the school of government, when we get them from the dean at like 12:30, we're all going, does that maybe things, we should be up at 12:30 answering? And we've had to talk about it. No, sometimes that's just the way it happens. Sometimes that's when it goes out. Doesn't mean when you've worked on it, it just, that's when it goes out. So, but I do want to ask this question because you started out saying they're really quick to return communications. Did you, have you talked about what the expectation is? Maybe you could actually get another hour's worth of sleep.
I don't think she sleeps. And I think she tries to, I think she tries like, some people are morning people. So she's up at 4:00, 5:00, I'm answering those. Some people are night people. So she's, I've got 10 to 12, I'm answering those. Or maybe she just needs to tell us, listen. About before I eat or after, you know.
So let me ask the board, what is a reasonable response to your request for, or, you know, whatever it is? I mean, is a day reasonable? Is an hour reasonable? What, what is, is two days? What, what's reasonable?
Depends on what it is.
According to issue. I mean, I, I can't say an hour or this or that, but I think that's according to issue. I, you know, get it to them when you got opportunity, you know, that could be a week.
Hey, now, I think if something is really a crisis, you're going to call anyway. But to me, you know, in my, in my business, you know, I have a rule to respond to people in 24 hours. You know, and like sometimes I'll look at my email at night, and I'll answer it at night, but I don't expect something to happen at night, just when I can answer it. And like last night, I got an email from that man who didn't know his, you know, the address thing. So I sent an email out not expecting anything. And, you know, Jonathan Changai, and, you know, he was the first one to respond it.
These 12 hours difference. He was just getting up.
Right. But, but so I never expected any of that. But the long and short of it, I think the man sent the email at like 8:30, and he got an answer from somebody, from Carolyn, at like 9:00 this morning.
And I, I would tell you, I think from a staff perspective, 24 hours seems like a long time to be getting back to. I don't think any of us would be really comfortable waiting that long.
But, but we're saying it's not a, a crisis. I mean.
I, I don't even think about the timeframe. I mean, I don't, they, they do very well. I mean, I haven't even thought about this. I mean, this is something you brought up.
The reason I'm bringing it up is, I wonder if there's some wiggle room for more permission not to be that responsive. That's where I was going with that. Clearly, you, that was like, they're doing a super human job.
I think Wanda Green is wired to respond the way the person is going to respond.
But then, I can't help that. There's nothing we can do about it.
I can't, I can't.
I don't think you can change that.
I mean, if you talk longer, I still may get those answers out there.
Well, I don't expect anything on weekends. I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect return call more, but I expect an email until Monday morning.
And I appreciate that for all of us. But, I mean, if you leave a voicemail and tell us you made it, we can check this briefly.
Yeah, I, I think it's up to us. I think we need to say, we need to probably, if there's any doubt, I've got WLS calling, I need some information. I need to talk with them, but I'm not sure about something. That obviously is pretty urgent and important.
I think emails are for, our weekends are for crisis, you know? I really do.
Yeah, I used to, if somebody called me on Sunday from one of the stores, I'd answer the phone and go, what, what's burning now?
Can we put that around? Can staff ask you to respond within 24 hours?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
If your question is, or, yeah.
If it's on the weekend, please, if you, if you respond, I'm not going to. Because, you know, unless it's emergency, you have my phone number, I, I'm not going to respond on the weekend. But if we send something out, sometimes we wonder if you, if you've seen it. But, and Kathy, last time you made a really good point. When you said, when, when you don't respond at all, you start going.
You go to your spam files, whatever.
Well, or just create. Yeah, or it's a no.
Yeah.
And sometimes it's not a no. It's, I didn't see it, or I don't understand, or.
You're not talking about like this, Mr. Contact things?
Oh, no, no. I'm talking about when I send you something saying, you know, here's this coming up. Yeah. Can you do this? Can you not do this? And, and a simple can't do it works. Or a no works. Just, just within 24 hours of a, or I got to think about it. Or, you know, it just helps us know that you, you saw it.
So, that's a good question, in terms of, you know, any response. It can be no, but something, that way we know. So that leads me to where the very former top two got this change to indicator, because you haven't gotten it. You're one of them. You're one of them.
We all, we all do.
Yeah, I had followed, remember? I mean, I.
So check with me freely, because I, I do want to resolve that.
But mine got done, but I had.
Yeah, you just got done.
You got mine, right?
I don't think so.
I got mine, but mine got it. I think that's same. Well, maybe you don't.
Yeah, mine, mine got it. I remember now.
In my list.
I'm saying mine, huh?
No, we had to send some before the. Well, I, I might just be back in touch with you with the same request that Kathy made. Will you tell me yes or no? Anything else for this list? Because I do want to end on time. And we're close to it. And before we end, I want to indulge with a bit of feedback in terms of this same kind of format, but with regard to this particular retreat, because you're still, this is still in sort of the second retreat this group's going on. And I want to make sure that you get what you need. And so I'd like just a little bit of feedback for if we really didn't do next steps the way I'd wanted to either. But she can say that's what we should have done before. So in terms of this retreat, for you all, in terms of it, it can be anything. What worked well, what might you do differently? It could be the location, it could be the timing, it could be the conversation, it could be the food, it could be whatever, it could be the content, it could be the lead up, whatever it is. What worked particularly well for you all, and what would you like to do differently?
I thought it was good overall.
And when you say good, what made it good?
You know, the conversation between staff, commissioners, you.
Was free flowing?
Well, it's free flowing, and you brought things forward. You, you challenged us in areas that would say certain things, and you challenged areas. So that, that brought a little into the picture up.
Good participation. Thank everybody who talked tonight. I've been in some where people didn't talk at all.
I would maybe you have a particular.
I would admit you have a particular.
No, not at all.
The reason we do this is because next year, when you go, oh, I want to have a retreat, you want to go, wow, this works particularly well, I want to make sure we replicate that, or just stunk, we don't want to do this at all.
I put it wrong with the crunch as well, it was flexible, and we needed to readjust, we had to readjust.
Yeah, flexible. I don't think any of us were ever gonna go in a straight line subject matter, so. It's one of how we are.
Things you might do differently?
Yeah, good. I guess next time, maybe you'll have less slides to do, because we really weren't able to get through everything, so maybe the script is more talkative than others, so might narrow the focus a little bit more next time.
You can tell us, are we more talkative than the norm?
I don't have any comment about that one really, yes. The slides were intentional on my part, which is actually unusual, because I don't usually do that. But the, you said, so narrow the focus or tighten the focus, because you thought we didn't get through what we wanted to get through, is that right?
Well, I don't know what the objective was. If the objective was for everybody to open up, and, you know, then you definitely.
That's a big objective.
If it was to come away with, you know, three goals for next year or whatever. It could be a negative in another way, too. We could all sit here like, that means it's been real quiet, and she could have used every bit of it.
Well, I think that my intention with this goal setting didn't work the way I thought it might. And so that was part of what we did, was redesign, thinking about that, so. But I didn't think we were gonna get far in this conversation, I wanted to get you talking to one another.
Just, that's just a thought.
And I think you told me at the beginning, when we talked, that you wouldn't be setting. I mean, I think you had anticipated that already before we even got started, so. I think you fulfilled what you saw going, which was to not set specific goals of this particular one. And I think we'd even emailed about possibly a follow-up, and I was, you know, I was kind of like, I said, I don't think the majority would want to do that. And I didn't talk to any of them, that was just my gut about that.
I, I actually love this kind of stuff, but, you know, to some people, it's, you know, it's kind of boring. And sometimes, you know, there's times where it's like ebb and flow on everything, but, you know, just being able to learn about each other, the conversations, I just, I like this kind of stuff.
I thought that, yes, good. I probably, I'm the least smart person in the room, so I probably didn't understand it the way I should have, but it didn't flow to me from this piece of paper to that. And so that, that was difficult.
So it was the flow, not the ambiguity of questions?
Actually, we have smashed the questions that when we give a board, we're bringing before.
Yeah, I was expecting three questions, and then we were going to go teach you the three questions, and we kind of ran a rabbit.
I mean, I told my.
Kind of ended up working, which is cool.
Okay. Okay, that's good feedback for me.
That's kind of where I was going with, that maybe that occurred because the, maybe we had too much content or what, so that, what.
Well, and, yeah, that I knew we were gonna have. So I'll own that one for sure, I was prepared to move this way, this way, this way, this way. And there's still something that I was gonna do that we didn't do that.
She was so plain.
Anything else? And I do this for your benefit, not necessarily, I mean, for mine, too, but our benefit.
I'd say, just from a staff perspective, that I still think it'd be useful in whatever role the board and the county manager decide, whether that's nonfacilitated, to set some goals that are clear to staff about what your priorities are as a majority board. I would just say, I don't feel clear about that, and I felt when I got here. I understand you care about a lot of issues, but what you want us to focus on? I would just say, I think it's still worth a follow-up, even if that's a nonfacilitated discussion just among the board or your January planning, or, and that might just be me, but I'll leave it clear on the priorities.
What if, what if just, if we went around the room and said one word? One of priorities.
Today, right now?
Yeah, yeah, just one word, that's all. As a goal, not a feeling, but a project or something, a direction.
I mean, that's up to you all.
I mean, it could be interesting, it's not collective, you know, it's not, it's not a kind of, but I'm down with doing it.
But I mean, how do you get collective?
Well, I think, I think that we kind of go through.
What?
You said one word, so you can.
Oh, okay, oh, I didn't know we'd started already.
I mean, I think your point is, I think that's a good process to get to the collective, of starting with all the individuals, but I think we just need to schedule time to figure out, what do you do with that part?
Absolutely, I agree with that, I mean, you, you could try it, and that's fine, but you, how do you make meaning of it? You ain't got time to do that.
Well, and I even surveyed the commissioners, so if we want to do a follow-up, I spoke individually my gut feeling, but, you know, I'm like, I kind of, I really enjoy the interactions. It's just a time management thing, for me, that's the only restraint I have. So I don't know what the rest of the board wants, if they have interest in following up and maybe setting the whole term, what's the pleasure of board?
And I would like to.
You know, we have a sustainability plan, which really is a strategic plan, that we really, we do need to put that back on the table, say this is working for you.
Maybe we could do half-days for both of them, or is that doable?
Sure, just enough, I just, I mean, it's not the work, it really is, I burn the vacation days, that's for sure.
Do you have a work session where you could do this?
We could probably work, work through a work session.
We don't do work sessions.
We just call us up, keep them in this to work, and we're not really set.
I like the idea.
No, I'm good, I, I think it's a good thing to sit down. I think the more we get, we have this type of interchange, the better we can do the next time we have to talk to, make decisions.
Well, I would actually, you know, I would call and just. Quite a clarity, your staff's asking for it, I think it can only help you all in terms of where you go and how you line up your work for the year, at the very least, like your perspective, if you don't do a full-blown three-year plan. You know, this is what, we talk about best practices, this is what counties that rock it do. They figure out what they want to focus on, and then they put their plan together for the year. So, you know, we, based on conversations, it was, we thought it was really important that you all kind of gel together as a group, make sure you've got your stuff going on. But I would encourage you to get greater clarity on your strategic priorities. And I'm happy to provide you with some exercises or something like that, if you want to do that.
I could give them just in March or something.
Yeah, well, first way you want, you want that.
But I don't want to say I'm not clear on what their major interests are, just focus, work focus. What matters most to you in the next year, what's your focus on, would be helpful to them.
Well, and not individually, but corporately, not, not that.
And you have to get together like this in order to find that out, because you cannot do it the other way, networking back and forth, and all of it, just.
I'm partial to that approach.
Any final thoughts?
You've done great, Tom, we appreciate you coming up.
Thank you for your work and your time and attention.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Democrats on the news tonight.